All those in favor of trustee Ozuna's motion to approve the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Trustee, trustee Clem, sent aye.
And chair is aye as well and it passes unanimously four zero. That brings us to the discussion portion of the agenda. And the first item is improving remote learning and understand that Dr. Barrett will present this.
Troy, am I good to share my screen?
Yes, sir, you are.
All right, Chairman Newhoff, trustees, Dr. Rannells, and the amazing clerk Newbold. I want to start tonight by thanking everyone who participated in the committee to improve remote instruction or who provided us input on improving remote learning. Our parents on our panel were Kyle Campbell, Lindsay Young, and Stacy Peterson. All three of these parents spent hours in work sessions as well as time outside of work sessions reviewing material and providing feedback. I'd like to point out Stacy in particular, who returned to spend a full day with our curriculum and instruction team, finalizing the plan, giving us good feedback on two key areas of our plan or suggestions. I'd also like to thank teachers Jeremiah Brown from Joplin, Chris Redman from Siena, Jessica Simpson from Centennial, Chantel Bennett from Mountain View, Joshua Aldinger from Meridian High, and Sue Darden from Galileo. This group attended the same committee meetings, discussed the plan with colleagues, provided input to support their fellow educators and West Ada students on top of their already extremely demanding day jobs. I also want to thank building principals Cliff Rice from Mountain View, Matt Genetti from Eagle Middle, Amy Larson from Paramount, Derek Bub from Centennial, Will Shoemaker from Victory, Casey Snite from Siena, and Ryan Willhite from Heritage. I want to thank the administrative team of curriculum coordinators Laura Knudsen over English Language Arts, Lori Gash over Social Studies Health and PE, Kara Hinkson over Arts, World Languages, and Gifted Talented, Chris Stoker over Math and Science, Kylie Bendorf over Advanced Opportunities in Aven. This group has spent the majority of a couple of weeks just working on this project alone. Entire curriculum instruction team, all of our coaches, regional directors, the digital integration team, representatives from special services, including Jenny Mundy Castle from EL, Ramona Lee and Christie Butler from Special Education, Jonathan Gillan CFO, Devon Delashmet CTO, and Josh White from the technology team, Jennifer Fletcher from Professional Development, Mr. Heller and Dr. Rannells. I know I am forgetting lots of folks and for that I apologize, but my thanks goes out to all. When this committee was created, Mr. Heller and I felt it was vital to have all stakeholders involved in the development of this plan and make sure that all groups were represented. As Mr. Heller mentioned several weeks ago, this committee started prior to the successful board motion on October 13th. However, I have framed this presentation for the board tonight around the elements specified in the motion, which you can see listed on this slide. I want to ensure the members of the board and everyone listening that I will only be hitting highlights of the plan. As you can see here, the notebook that was created is very extensive and is full of materials. So I have kind of shortened that in, shortened this presentation down, but provided this one night notebook itemized for easy access for administrators and teachers to reference as a resource. If I reviewed all the materials that were present in this notebook, it would, well, we may have our final election results before I get done with that. All right, so as a general overview, I want to highlight the key determinations that the committee came up with to improve remote learning. First, the delivery of instruction primarily through daily synchronous instruction to all students was a major assertion of the committee. Second, following the bell schedules at the middle and high school levels on both in-person and remote learning days and at the elementary level. If required to remove to hybrid or remote following a building adopted instructional schedule at the elementary level. And third, developing and implementing a building-wide, uniform organizational framework in Microsoft Teams. We also felt it was important to include the why behind each of these determinations. So if you, in the notebook, we have a section just titled "Why", to ensure that we are being transparent and developing common understanding. Addressing the primary questions of the board motion from October 13th, the first expectation was determining learning outcomes and metrics. Working closely with one of our parents who works as a systems analyst to ensure we clearly articulated our metrics. In West Ada, our metrics are clearly defined in our continuous improvement plan, the SIP plan, which is approved by the board and shared with stakeholders and the State Department of Education. Our expectation for the 2020-2021 school year is that by year's end, regardless of the pandemic, our students will continue at the same levels or outperform the student performance data from the 2018-2019 school year, which is the last year we have data due to the shutdown in the spring. All of these averages are significantly above state performance averages. We also expect that our student engagement metrics will be maintained at the 2018-2019 levels or exceed these levels on student engagement surveys given near the end of the school year to parents, staff, and students. Finally, we expect that robust classroom metrics will continue to be collected, evaluated, and utilized to adjust instruction using proficiency scales and common formative assessments. When working to specify remote education standards for students at all grade levels, we determined that in general terms, our education standards should not be altered in the remote setting from where we have set them for the in-person environment. However, expectations do adjust a bit for all roles in the school building and for parents and students when the majority of instruction is delivered daily to students in a synchronous manner. Therefore, the committee highlighted the expectations for each, for most staff, excuse me, in the school building, students and parents, to help support each of these groups and ensure they are aware of partnership and collaborative work required to support student learning in this mode of instructional delivery. The committee also felt it was key to develop a bridging document that compares past practices to desired current practices and ensures there is an awareness of how some instructional practices will need to change and what that could look like. A solid implementation plan was another key component we received a great deal of input on from the parent committee member. While I don't run, while I won't run through the entire implementation plan, which was developed with target dates and anticipated completion dates, I have listed several of the key elements of the implementation plan on this slide. These include communication of the plan, which is already started, not only to the board and stakeholders this evening, but to the district leadership team made up of district and building administrators on Thursday, November 29th. Continuing to build resources for teachers, including instructional resources, professional development, and technology to increase the effectiveness of synchronous learning as well as to make sure these resources are easily available and supported. Concerning the board's request to include a training and prep time scheduling plan, the committee felt that the COVID-19 task force was in the best position to make these recommendations and supported their recommendation on October 13th to increase teacher prep time by adjusting the schedule to include a remote learning Monday, 6:00 to 12:00, and Monday early release, K through 5. It was of vital importance to the committee that it was clearly understood that moving to the primary delivery of synchronous daily instruction to all students will require a significant increase in prep time for teachers. The committee also felt it would be necessary to continue to develop resources for teachers and administrators, including the notebook that was developed by this committee, the West Ada Instructional Playbook, excuse me, and the West Ada Remote Learning Notebook, and to ensure teachers have access to instructional videos, resources from the Distance Learning Playbook, a resource, a book that was purchased for all teachers and administrators in the district, as well as resources for specific needs such as lesson planning and organization. The final request of the board was to address additional technology needs. One of the major determinations of the committee in this area was that synchronous instructional delivery daily to all students can be done successfully with the existing technology available in the classrooms. These are examples, there are examples, excuse me, of this taking place in most buildings in the district currently. However, we wanted to ensure teachers and administrators had specific examples of how this is being done in classrooms. Because for some, they simply don't know how to get started. So we curated some example setups that members of the committee are presently using or have observed. We have five or six example setups in the notebook. With that being said, the committee did develop recommendations for technology which has the ability to improve the visual and auditory delivery of synchronous daily instruction to all students. Excuse me, all students. The purchase of additional technology has been discussed with Jonathan Gillen, who has helped us to secure funds to make sure we have that ability. And technology team led by CTO Devon Delashmet and Josh White has been working closely with me and other members of the committee to determine exact products and brands that are best for purchase and meet the expectations of increased instructional delivery effectiveness while not creating interactive issues with present hardware and software. We currently have several devices in classrooms currently being piloted. With that, I would stand for any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Barrett. Do any trustees have any questions for Dr. Barrett? Trustee Johnson?
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions. Let me ask the first one. Looking at the schedule, the rollout plan I think is to have everything available and rolling by the end of January. Is that correct, Mr. Barrett?
Well, that is our target completion date. So remember, trustee Johnson, that we don't have full control over that because we've already, as a matter of fact, purchased 2,600 devices that will provide a camera, a speaker, and a microphone in every classroom to enhance the delivery of synchronous learning. But like everything in the COVID environment, there's just almost nothing that's not on back order at this point. So we are looking at, from the beginning of November when those were ordered, about a six to 10 week backlog.
Okay. My, so what does that do to your timeline?
Well, we should still be on target to be able to, so I guess it's key that I make sure and stress that we have the technology in the classroom now with the document cameras, the laptop that is provided by our, to teachers, and the desktop computer projectors in every classroom. We have the ability to deliver synchronous instruction. We're really looking at technology that will enhance that ability to deliver that synchronous instruction. There's two major things that you got to focus on when you are looking at delivery of synchronous instruction from a technology standpoint, right? And that is auditory and visual. And so that is why we want to enhance that with the purchase of a camera called the BCC 950, which is a camera, a speaker, and a microphone all in one unit. And it actually has a cool little remote control that you can scan the classroom and the teacher can focus the camera on items that they want the folks at home. And if you've got those in the classroom joining via Teams as well at the same time, they can see those images as well. Of course, they've also got the advantage of being there in person. But it gives them some flexibility to enhance that synchronous delivery. So I don't think it really alters our timeline. And I think that we still can, our real target date is to make sure that we are delivering synchronous instruction as our primary instructional method at the latest by the beginning of second semester. Everything takes some time, right? All of this takes a learning curve and a development curve. But I think that we are okay on our target dates for that.
Thank you. So if I listened to that, what I would, as a parent of a child in the district, if my child's in hybrid or remote starting second semester, would I be fair to expect synchronous learning on their hybrid and remote days?
So I would say in most cases, yes. There are some subjects and some grade levels where synchronous instructional delivery does create some issues. And so there are still solutions that are being sought there, some PLC work that is being done there. So for example, I'll just throw out a couple of examples that I've had discussions with principals and with teachers regarding. Take for instance pottery. If you are doing a throwing clay unit or any type of pottery unit that requires clay and the use of clay, you're going to have to be pretty strategic, right? Because you obviously can't provide wheels and clay to everyone at their home environment. If you are in a CTE class and you're a fourth-year welding student, we're going to have to come up with some options for those students. And then another issue that I have discussed with a couple of principals is imagine that you are a kindergarten teacher and you have got 11 kindergartners in your in-person classroom and you've got 11 kindergartners online. Managing that setup without some very strategic planning is going to certainly be a difficulty. So there are some issues there. There are some places where we're still working to streamline and develop techniques and good instructional delivery models. But in essence, I would say for the majority, and I'm looking at, again, like the 80 to 90% ratio because we do have those outliers that do create difficult situations, I would say yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Boston. That's helpful.
Thank you.
My last question is really around content management and just what kind of, because I think the first thing I heard said was that teachers need more prep time to be able to develop out this style of learning. And I was wondering if the prep time plan we approved gave enough time or if there was some other proposals coming forward around prep time and content management or if there's some sort of content efficiencies that we're looking to do at the same time to help that.
That's an excellent question, trustee Johnson. So what I would say is we're always looking for efficiencies. And we really believe that because we're a strong professional learning community district, that that is really the backbone and the support of looking for those efficiencies and working together as collaborative teams of teachers to try and be as efficient as possible. I would say that the proposal that was approved by the board to provide time did provide additional time for teachers. They had their first remote Monday on this week, so yesterday. So we're early in that process. So I don't know that we have robust feedback on that. And I know that they would always covet more time because the more time that you have, the better preparation that you can do. But we have to work within realistic parameters as well and the state requirements as well as ensuring that we are staying on learning targets with our kids. So while I would like to have more robust feedback on that, we're early in that process. So I don't know that we have any plans that I'm aware of right now to seek more time. I know that teachers would certainly benefit from more time. But at this point, we just don't have that robust data to be able to report on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, or thank you to Mr. Barrett and Mr. Chair. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Johnson. Do any other trustees have questions for Dr. Barrett?
Mr. Chairman, this is trustee Ozuna.
Trustee Ozuna.
Thank you. Thanks for all the information here. I appreciate it. I think that we're already starting to see some changes take place with the second quarter, which have been really positive. The feedback that I'm getting around that has been really positive. Can you take a minute just to let us know how the technology test went and maybe technology around the first remote Monday? Because certainly that needs to go smoothly for this synchronous learning to work start second semester the way that it's intended to.
So I will, trustee Ozuna, Chairman Newhoff, trustee Ozuna, Dr. Rannells. So I will, I will do my best for you there. I have been in a couple of presentations from CTO Devon Delashmet sharing that information. If he is on, Troy, is he on tonight?
Sir, I don't see him on the list at the moment.
Mr. Chairman, this is Devon Delashmet. I am here.
Devon, do you want to take the lead on that or do you want me to limp through it?
Mr. Barrett, trustees, I could give a brief overview. I know that the board has been given our initial findings on the stress test that we conducted, but I'd be happy to do a quick summary. We still are working to finalize all of the results and we are working to look at the survey data that was collected and follow up on that data. But I can share some brief findings.
Thank you for the question.
Trustee Ozuna, trustees, Chairman Superintendent Rannells, again Devon Delashmet, CTO for the West Ada School District. We did conduct a stress test, as you are aware. The test was designed to look at really our systems, both from internal and an external perspective. And our attempt at this first stress test was to generate as much traffic as we possibly could to stress our systems in every way possible. So the stress test asked our teachers to do a 30-minute activity with our students. It asked every student to, in grade three through 12, to log into their device both at home and at school and to open up and turn their camera on to participate and to then, after the teacher provided a lesson, to respond to a survey that had been, a student survey that had been created by our district integration specialist team and our curriculum department. In addition, we then had a teacher survey. I think I've related a couple of times that for us, it's very difficult to get very in-depth knowledge about what's happening in individual meetings. So we did provide a survey for teachers so they could provide us some feedback on what happened. Again, I'll try and be brief. But the bandwidth that we generated or the traffic that was generated by creating this stress test was pretty significant. Since we made our initial filtering changes after the first few days of school, on average, our traffic is between 5 gigabits and 8 gigabits on a daily basis. It usually peaks around 8 gig. At, during the stress test, we were able to generate over 20 gigabits of traffic. Right now, as a reminder, our gigabit, our internet connection is set at 20 gigs, but we have the ability for that traffic to spike all the way to 40 gigs. And internally, we have been building all of our systems to support the 20 gigabit connection. What we saw in our internet bandwidth as we reached that maximum was that really all of our systems were performing and handling that traffic. We didn't see any physical limits reached in any of our equipment at that level. So that was really some good news. So we know that our internet connection can handle that level of connectivity. And so then the question became, what happened to the rest of our systems? And the two significant, or three significant systems that we monitored and looked at were our filter, which as you all know, we struggled with in the first few days of school. We also looked at our wireless system and we looked at our district firewall. I'll start with the filter. What we found is that the filter has two main components. There, the components that deal with filtering internet traffic from inside the district were heavily taxed during this because the majority of the traffic that was generated ended up coming from inside the district. And the reason for that is, is that because we adjusted our filtering policies after those first few days of school to allow devices that are home to actually connect directly to Microsoft, Apple, and other heavy bandwidth using, usage services, educational services that we subscribe to so that that traffic no longer has to come through our district network. Each device connects to our filter and makes sure that they can, it double checks to see where sites that they can connect to. And then if it can connect locally or without going through the district network, it will do so. And so what we saw is, I think, a couple of key findings. That our internet tra, our, our filters are scaled in a way that they will be able to handle the level of synchronous learning that we want to pursue. So whether we're hybrid or full remote, we believe we can handle that traffic. And we also were able to verify that the traffic that is coming from devices at home, the filter, part of our filtering engine that handles that traffic was barely impacted during this test, which means that traffic, we were able to confirm that traffic is not coming through our system and does go direct to the cloud services. So I think from a filtering standpoint, we feel like everything is looking very good there. We do feel like we have the filtering capacity to handle the number of students that we have since we've made those changes. In fact, we do believe we'll be able to support even, even more students. That being said, we still, because of the work that we did over, in those first few days of school, we are still going to be adding some additional capacity. We have some servers that are dedicated to the VPN solution that we started the year out with. Those will be repurposed to further increase our capacity and give us the ability to be more flexible, also to more fault tolerance should we do, need to do maintenance on the filtering system. So that will provide us the ability, should we need to, at any time, day or night, be able to maintain the filtering system. We'll have a little bit more flexibility to ensure that we don't have to take the system completely down. There's still our situations where that might happen, but we are going to use that excess capacity to further our ability to provide robust services to our students and staff, no matter where they are. On our firewall, I'll just touch on that briefly. We, our firewall is spec for a 20 gigabit internet connection based upon the way traffic is flowing. We did not see any issues with that system. And we do believe we are scaled appropriately there. And there were no issues with performance in that system at all. We did identify early on when we were preparing this test that we knew we would have some performance issues inside of our wireless system. Currently, it is scaled to support around 20 gigs because we only have two 10-gig connections into our core for our wireless traffic. So we did see in our testing that as we reached the 20 gigabit maximum bandwidth level that our wireless system started to slow down. And we did see that in our, the results from our survey. We had a lot of people reporting, I would not say a lot, I should say, but we did see that people would say, oh, the Teams meeting was slow to start. I was able to get all my students in, but it didn't, wasn't as responsive as it normally was. Or we had an error message. I had some students who couldn't get in, but then they were able to reconnect. And we were really able to correlate that with the test data that really showed that we would see a slowdown in that system. We already on our November maintenance, we are two more 10-gig connections into that system. So now our wireless system has a 40 gigabit capacity. Again, we're just making those, have excess capacity to support anything that the district may need to be doing in our, in our move forward to support either hybrid or remote or any combination thereof. I do have a number of results of survey data. I won't cover that now unless the board has some very specific questions on that. I will say that we, our survey for students was primarily around, we asked teachers how many students participated, both onsite and offsite. We asked students questions about the skills that we think We asked students questions about the skills that we think that they will need in a remote learning environment that you would need, I think, with any piece of technology, and that's that sometimes you need to restart your device, sometimes you need to restart and re-log into both your device and into an application such as Teams. So a lot of our questions were focused on those, those services. And you can see really based upon grade level how students are able to pick up and pick those skills up. So that's kind of an overview of the stress test. We felt like it went really well and we're really prepared to support our, our next moves with instructions. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to stand for those at this time.
Great, thank you, Mr. Delashman. Trustee Ozuna, did you have any follow-up to that or other questions?
I don't, thank you.
Trustee Klaufenstein, did you have any questions?
I did, actually, for Mr. Barrett. So I was, Mr. Barrett, I was just concerned about your timeline. One is that if we're looking at the end of January, basically next semester, for rolling this out, I, I question whether we can actually reach that. We have over 7% of our students now in isolation. We have teachers who are getting sick. We're, we're getting issues now. And I'm wondering, do you have a fast-track option? Are you on the line, Dr., or Mr. Barrett?
Is he on mute?
Dr. Barrett, I believe you're on, I believe you're on mute, Dr. Barrett.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we can.
Perfect, sorry about that. I got bumped, I think, when, when Devin was talking. And appreciate that input, Devin. Obviously, he does, does a much better job than me. Just to follow up on that, I would reiterate, Trustee Ozuna, that I have 100% confidence with the data that he has shown me, that we are ready for synchronous learning. Trustee Klaufenstein, so I may have misconstrued that, I apologize if that's the way that it came across. Our anticipation, or our, our plan is absolutely not to begin implementation in January. We have already begun implementation. So our, our kickoff date, really, our implementation date was when we first communicated to our, our building leaders because we had already been piloting and working with teachers. I had been to multiple buildings, several other district administrators and building administrators had been visiting classrooms and watching teachers who were delivering synchronous, looking at how they were set up and how they were delivering and developing plans for implementation in their own buildings. So this is already well underway. That's why we made sure to share schematics that detail how a synchronous classroom can be set up now with the equipment we have in the classroom. What I was really kind of working with, Trustee Johnson, or answering her question through, was to say, when can we anticipate that we will have the majority of instruction delivered through a synchronous manner? Obviously, I don't have complete control over that implementation. We rely heavily on the building administrators who are doing a fabulous job in very tough conditions, but they know the culture of their buildings. They know their teachers, they know their skill levels, they know where that professional development is needed. And they are the ones who can communicate to me how to best support them and serve them. So, and, and we know that that does take some time. So all I'm saying is, they will take some time before we will see them now.
Dr. Barrett, are you still there?
Troy, am I still on?
Yes, sir, you are.
Okay. Dr. Barrett, you're kind of coming in and out a little bit, cut a little bit about the end of what you were saying. But, but I
So I don't know exactly, I don't know exactly where it cut me off, so I would just say, we've already begun the implementation process, Trustee Klaufenstein.
Thank you very much, and that relieves a lot of concern. And I definitely am concerned about the safety of teachers and students in this environment. Things are getting very hot. I just want to make sure they're protected. We have at least a plan, however non-perfect it might be, that leads us to also leveraging and our educational resources and and supporting students in their educational goals. My other concern about this, and just going through the next two or three months, whether we'll be in remote or not during that period, but it sounds to me like we're looking at additional training time from teachers. And it just sounds like a lot of time, currently what I'm hearing is a lot of time is being spent by teachers doing additional training or additional reporting or all these different requests. And I'm just a little concerned that we might be overfilling the bucket. And how much time on a per-teacher basis do you think would be needed for a teacher to become comfortable with the equipment above and beyond their, their additional job? I mean, are they looking to have to spend a weekend or some evenings to be able to get used to this equipment? What is your perspective?
Chairman Newhoff, Trustee Klaufenstein, trustees, Superintendent Rannells, that is a really difficult question to answer because it varies so widely. So, so we have some teachers who, this is, this is really not much of a shift for them. They've already been doing it. Some of our teachers who are even on this committee have been delivering synchronous instruction since the beginning of the years, or the beginning of the year, excuse me. There are others that this, this is a significant challenge, and it will take a, a fair amount of work with their PLCs and, and work with their administrators to implement synchronous learning because they're less adept. But it is amazing at how quickly the skill level has risen. So I'm very, very optimistic. I know our teachers almost, you know, really to a fault, will do anything that they can to help our students to be successful. And I'm certainly not trying to put anyone in a position to sacrifice great amounts of time over above what they're already doing, which I know is extravagant. But we have tried to etch out some of that time on, on Mondays to provide some of that professional development. And we are trying to provide resources. Training is really difficult. I'm going to be honest with you, Trustee Klaufenstein. It's really difficult in this environment because we are really struggling to keep our teachers safe and in the classrooms. And, and we have a real sub-s shortage. So anybody who is willing to join the subpool that will really strengthen our ability to continue to deliver instruction. And so we don't want to pull teachers out of buildings. So we're trying to come up with methods to get professional development to them and to provide resources to them. And to make the technology that we are utilizing as easy as possible. So our initial recommendation was for a lot of Bluetooth devices and some of these elements that we have seen used to enhance the instruction. We settled on the camera that I mentioned prior, the BCC 950, which is a camera, a microphone, and a speaker all in one unit because it is a plug-and-play unit. You plug it into your computer's USB drive, your laptop or your desktop's USB drive, and it auto-links into your Team site. And it will provide the microphone, the camera feed, and the speaker for it without the teacher having to go in and understand extensively how to change device settings in most cases. So we are looking at all of those options and how we can best support the teachers, which is, which is key. If we can't get the teachers to the point where they need to be, then we don't have a functional plan.
Thank you, and I truly agree with that. Just as a side comment, if there's any way for, if additional training needs to happen, if there's any way instead of an add to a teacher's schedule, it can be an exchange for an occurring assignment, so that assignment gets pulled off and this item gets added, that might be a possibility in your plan. If it's, if that would be something that's feasible, I think that would be very helpful.
I greatly appreciate that recommendation, Trustee Klaufenstein. We certainly are not looking to add things to the plate that is already overflowing.
Thank you very much, and thanks to all the people who had contributed to this plan. I truly appreciate all your time and efforts on this.
Do any, are there any other questions from trustees? Well, they, my colleagues pretty much covered the questions I had, so I thank you, Dr. Barrett. The next item on our agenda is, of course, the interviews for the Zone 3 trustee seat. Given that we are going to do that in one fell swoop and go, and not have a break in the middle of that, and, which is going to be fairly long, I'm going to call a 15-minute recess right now so that everyone can do whatever they need to do before we start that process, and we will resume an open session at 6:35. I'm ready. Hello. Good evening, I'm calling this regular meeting of the West Ada Board of Trustees back in session after our. Brief recess. This brings us to discussion item number two, which is to interview the qualified candidates. For vague, for the vacancy in zone three and I'd like to begin. By thanking everyone that showed interest in this position. It's kind of an unusual situation that. Three of the trustees are currently on the board, including myself, as well as the trustee you're replacing actually. Came to the board through this very process, so we're. Very familiar with the position that you're in this evening. I want to briefly describe what's going to happen here. Okay, this is gonna be. We're going to ask questions of each of you in a panel forum. There'll be 10 questions. Each of you will have the opportunity to answer each of the questions. The questions were selected by the trustees. From basically three sets of questions, one from our. Our patrons submitted. Some that we got from the Idaho School Boards Association that they suggested. As well as ones that were recently used by a neighboring district that's been through this process very recently. So we selected 10 questions out of that. Pool of questions. And I asked the clerk to come up with a random order for the 10 of you. And that order is shown on the screen right now. So way, way this is going to work is that. The first question. The first person to answer it will be Ms. Buffy and please, if I am mispronouncing your name. Please correct that. When you're answering your question because I don't recall that I've ever met any of you before. And then Mr. Willis, Ms. Haney and so forth. Then the second question, Mr. Willis will be the first person to answer it. Followed by Ms. Haney and Ms. Buffy will be the, the last person and so forth, so everyone will. Basically have their shot at being in the same position and answering the questions. Obviously with 10 questions and 10 of you, this is going to be a fairly protracted process. The trustees will not ask questions. Or respond to what you say, I will ask all the questions that again have been. Selected by us as a group. Through a voting process. You'll have two minutes to answer every question, there's a counter that Mr. Stevens has control of. And we ask you to please, out of consideration for everyone, try to stay within that two minutes. Are there any questions about the process before we begin from any of the candidates? Okay. And please, you know, remember to mute your microphones when you're not the person answering, so. The first question will go to. Ms. Sheena Buffy. And the question is. Why do you seek to be a trustee and what specific issue or issues, if any. Cultivated your desire to apply for this position on the Board of Trustees? Floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, so. The reason that I applied for this position is because I feel like. I'm well qualified, I have eight years of experience at a school district in Nye County. And I, so my husband and I moved to Boise four years ago, Boise is his hometown. And we have four, we're raising four children here, we have two children at Frontier, one at Low Scott and one who just graduated from Centennial. Last year. I. I have a master's degree in human resource management and a bachelor's in English and I'm a certified workplace mediator. And so. Prior to moving to Boise, I served at the school district as HR director. And I really enjoyed working in the schools and I felt like even though I was. The head of HR, I still was able to make. A great impact on the student education, so. Really, I'm really passionate about public education as well as I'm very passionate about public service. So I thought that this would be a really good fit and so that is why I am seeking this appointment. I don't know if there are specific issues that I, I'm gonna, you know, want to set out to, to target. I just think that I would be of value to the school board. And I'm just very vested in the school district's success. Not only because my children. Are in the schools, but as a community leader in my neighborhood. And as a HR professional at the state level, I help oversee the state's recruitment. Program and our state workforce has over 25,000 employees, so it's, it's really. In everyone's best interest for our students to receive a world-class education and learn at the highest level to prepare them for college. Career and civil readiness, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willis, the same question, and if any of you need the question. Repeated, please tell me.
Chairman Newhoff, trustees Superintendent Ranell, thank you again for giving me this opportunity to, to visit with you this evening. Before I do my introduction and answer your question, I do want to publicly thank. Trustee Smiley for his service on, on the board. Not an easy position and obviously he cares about the students and, and the district, so. To answer your question, I really, I come to this, to the decision to put my name forward and raise my hand. Is I do have a heart for public service and. Both of my daughters attend the district Renaissance as well as Centennial and. I really think I bring three key things to this role, first and foremost, I have a background in public health. And facing the pandemic that we do today, my service leading the Idaho Red Cross here in Idaho. I think could be very helpful to our efforts. The second is I'm passionate about the efforts of the district. I led the West Ada Education Foundation for. Some of the most difficult financial times our country has ever had. And certainly in our community, and so I raised funds. That went directly to teachers and classrooms here in Arga District. And then lastly is my professional role, I'm, I'm a risk manager. Working with a large corporation here in, based here in Eagle. So every day I handle crisis and evaluate risk and look at the data, so. I think those three things will really help me in this role. There's one key issue that I'm focused on and that's student achievement, that's where I'll be zeroed in. That's, that's the most important thing that we as trustees will accomplish is, is making sure that our good students. Within the district are successful and prepared for their future, so. Again, thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Haney, you're up.
Yes, thank you, I would like to echo Mr. Willis in thanking Mr. Smiley for. All of his work and dedication to the West Ada School Board, it is very appreciated. So to answer the question. Why do I want to be a trustee? My heart is in education, it is what I have done for my entire professional career, I have my undergrad and my graduate's degree. In education and special education. I work in the education and public service field, it is what I'm passionate about. Our kids are our future and they deserve. Any and everything that we can pour into them to support them because it affects all of us. They are our future leaders, doctors, etc. I also have three kids in Spalding Elementary. Fifth grade, second grade and pre-k, so of course. I want to support them as much as I can as their parents. Um, I believe I'm qualified for this role, I work. For our state's Part C Early Intervention Program, which is. Mandated by the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, so we are monitored and regulated by. The Department of Ed Office of Special Education Programming, so I'm used to making high stakes. Decisions that have a large effect on many people. As far as an issue goes, I, again, student achievement is a huge piece of mine. We're such a large school district that I believe it takes a village to support such a large district. And I would like to maximize the opportunities. That these students can receive while also navigating the challenges that the growth. Of the Treasure Valley can present in addition to just managing such a large school district. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Chandler?
Yes, I was on the board roughly 15 years ago or so. And really enjoyed my time on, for that service. Actually, my background with education and otherwise is in, is in public service, which I did. Before I bought. which I did before I bought into a business around 20 years ago. I had the opportunity to, to serve on the board before. I really enjoyed it. I was appointed at that time and, and then served out a term and then was elected and served out that, that time, both in pretty short, the way it works. And just at that time, when it came to run again, my partners asked me not to run again because it does take a lot of time. I was, I, I didn't like that I had to do that, but I had to be fair to them. So, so I left the board and since then have been interested in, in what has happened. But now I'm retired and now I got the time and would like to serve again. And that's the reason I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kretschmar?
Good evening. I go by TJ. This is my first time doing anything at this level in my community. I'm a project controls manager, which is just, I help project management for an engineering firm here in town. I've spent 16 years in the construction field. I, I worked on power plants as a team leader and, and project management roles. So I feel that as, as a board member, I would bring a lot of team management, budget, risk intervention, you know, those sort of things to the, the team. And, you know, I feel that as, as a, a single father of a nine-year-old with dyslexia, I, I feel that there are certain aspects of the school district that need to be tuned up a little bit. And speaking of budget, there's, there's some ideas that, that we could, we could throw around for getting our teachers enough pay to make it more competitive with states, our surrounding states, specifically Wyoming. I know that they pay substantially better than, than we do. And I have a feeling that a lot of our teachers, they get good educations here at the universities and across state lines. Yeah, I appreciate the, the opportunity to, to be interviewed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Russell?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I am uniquely a well-rounded candidate for this position as I also have extensive HR background. I'm currently the Chief Human Resource Officer for a Department of Defense Roofing Company. And before that was also in HR. But previous to that, I also have extensive background in operations. And so with both of those being tied together, I think it's important that we start to really take a look at how we start to evaluate policies from an operational lens as well as HR and making sure that we're looking through all things through that big picture lens. I also have two children in the West Ada School District. And they both also, I'm a ten Frontier Elementary. I currently serve as the Chair of Serve Idaho, which is the Governor's Commission on Volunteering and Service. And with that, that is an appointed position directly from the Governor's Office. And so with this, I think it's important for me to have as many ties to my community as possible. I've worked remotely for other organizations based in different states for the last about eight years. And so it's important for me to make sure that the next generation of Idahoans are truly supported and looking at really what it takes for them to stay here. We have a lot of students that are moving on to other states. And so I think it's deeply rooted in K through 12 that we get to have those students be here long-term to not only support our state economically, but also just from a deep-rooted Idahoan perspective. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Allabon?
Thank you. And do you mind repeating the question?
Certainly. Why do you seek to be a trustee? And what specific issue or issues, if any, cultivated your desire to apply for a position on the Board of Trustees?
Sure, thank you. I, I don't know that I wanted to be a trustee until recently when, you know, through the pandemic, I've seen how much of a struggle it's been for not just my children in the district, but for teachers and parents and everyone else. And I just wanted to do what I could to make sure that our education leaders are doing what they can to best serve students and teachers. And, you know, personally, I I'm very methodical. And so I wanted to, you know, when we're making decisions for our community, we need to be engaging stakeholders and getting all their opinions, getting data, getting facts, and making the best decision that, that works for everybody. And you know, thank you trustees for your, for your service. And I know it's a thankless job that you guys do. But I've seen, well, it's been really tense with what's been going on and you know, some of the decisions and the scheduling has been inconsistent and so, and confusing a little bit. And so I wanted to do what I could to help. You know, before this, I, I wouldn't, honestly, I would never have thought that I would want to do something like this. But yeah, mostly because of the, the pandemic and the, the health issues. I, I wanted to do what I could to, to help in any way I can. And I think solid decision-making and strong leadership is a very important part of that. So thank you.
Thank you. And for those of you who have the ability, we would like to, for you to turn on your cameras when you're, you're answering the questions, if that's possible. Next is Mr. Jarvis.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and trustees. Thank you for taking time to listen to all of the input that we have this, this, this evening. My name is Brett Jarvis. I'm a father of two. I have a third grader and a kindergartner, both attend West Ada School District Schools. I myself am a product of, well, Joint School District Number Two, what was obviously at one point Meridian School District. I graduated from Eagle High School. My dad and my grandpa also went to Meridian High School. So I guess you could say West Ada kind of runs deep in my blood. When I saw that Trustee Smiley had resigned, and he's got a lot of experience, you know, I think decades of experience that he, that he brought to the board, and it'll be hard to replace him. But when I saw that there was a vacancy during this time, and I, we can consider this a time of crisis, I think, during this time of crisis, I felt almost compelled to put my name in the hat, so to speak, not knowing that this many qualified and capable people would have the same idea. And that's heartening that there's so many people in our community that are willing to take this on. But when I saw that, that there was an opening, I thought maybe my background and experience could be of benefit to the board. By training, I'm a lawyer. I'm a graduate of the University of Idaho College of Law. By profession, I'm a prosecutor. And I need to say this at the outset, I'm not here representing the prosecuting attorney's office of Canning County. I'm here as Brett Jarvis, a patron and a parent. But in my profession, I deal with some seriously high-stake situations where there's multiple stakeholders, lots of parties involved. And like I say, the stakes are high. And it's, daily I'm called upon to make decisions that account everybody's perspectives and to make those decisions. And I think that based on that, it's a skillset that I could use to help the school district and board here in West Ada. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jarvis. Yeah, we had some issue, at least in my feed, with the timer. Hopefully that was just on my end. But I think you were under two minutes. Anyway, next up is Mr. Osborne.
Hello, thank you. Let's see, wait. I've never done anything like this before. My first time doing anything like this. Been a welder fabricator for 20 years. I've been quality control management and project management now for about a year. Single father of a second grader over at Joplin. I want to keep West Ada one of the best districts in Idaho and just listen to issues and listen to all sides and keep moving things forward. Think outside of the box a lot, and I think that'll help and see things differently than most. So, thank you.
Thank you. And that brings us to Ms. Dooley.
All right, thank you so much for this opportunity. I've actually been interested in this position since we moved to our current house. We started out in the Summerwind School District where I helped out in classrooms and was a part of the PTA. And we have since moved to Pepperidge and Lewis and Clark. And I like being involved in my children's learning. I think I bring a unique perspective to a board. I've sat on a board before. And I want to bring an awareness of both the children's and the teachers and everyone's involved mental health. I think it's highlighted more in a pandemic, but we certainly need to keep in mind that this is not business as usual. Just because the technology is there doesn't mean that people have the mental capacity to succeed right now. And we need to be very aware of that. Our current hospitalization and suicide rate is climbing as a country. And I don't want to see that affect the children in West Ada. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that brings us to our second question, which is, what do you think is expected of you as a board member? And we will begin this round with Mr. Willetts.
Mr. Chairman, trustees, superintendent. That's a great question. You know, I think I go back to the word trust. I think that is absolutely key. Who trusts you? Obviously, the taxpayer is going to trust you with their funds, their treasure. The teachers are trusting you as their employer. The patrons and the parents are trusting you with their most valuable asset, their children. And of course, the students are trusting you the very most. As trustees, you provide the direction of the future of these youngsters, of these students. And as we are thoughtful, as, as in the role of a trustee, making sure that we use the resources that were provided wisely. And that's one thing I really want to compliment you as trustees, as well as the administration. You guys stretch the dollar, I don't, frankly, I don't know how you do it, much better than any other district in terms of the amount of students that we have in our district compared to the funding that we receive. And we certainly don't have the benefit of, in the levy, the way that our friends in, in our neighboring district does. But, but obviously, it's the key thing, I think, the role of trustee is to listen. Listen to parents, listen to students, listen to our good teachers and our staff members, and then act and provide leadership. And so I, as I, as I kind of reflect on what it means to be a good trustee, I think it's just that, focusing on those stakeholders that, that we would be called to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Haney?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I hope my video is working. I unmuted it. What do I think is expected of me in this role? Certainly to fulfill the duties that are outlined in the legislature. But to do so in a way that represents all stakeholders, from parents to students, teachers, district employees, administrators, and, and our whole state as a whole and, and the way that we are collectively included in Idaho's educational numbers and outcomes. And to provide thoughtful leadership in considering how to represent everyone in decision-making. As I mentioned before, I am used to making decisions that have high stakes, that continue to meet the mandates and the policies and the regulations, but also that take into account all stakeholders and represent everyone to the best of our abilities. But someone's going to be dissatisfied at some point. So thoughtful leadership incorporates all of that. It considers all sides, but it also uses data-driven decision-making, utilizing resources, evaluating current trends, collaborating with the community and with others. And all of those things, for me, they all play a role in thoughtful and productive leadership, which is ultimately what I believe is expected of a member of the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chandler?
Mr. Chandler is currently on the phone with me right now, trying to reconnect, sir.
All right. Give that a moment. Is he the number that popped up recently here, Mr. Stevens?
No, sorry, I, I just gave him the direct phone number again.
All right.
He will be joining here in just a moment.
Am I back?
Yeah, you're back, Mr. Chandler. Were you able to hear the question?
I did not hear the question.
Okay, the question is, what do you think is expected of you as a board member?
One thing that I remember that was, that was important in being in the board before was to, to be at the meetings, to be at the times when the, the, the other board members were meeting and getting together and making decisions. I thought that was, that was big. The other expectations were to study the, study the packets when they came in. And, and they were, and I suspect they're just as colossal now as they were in those days. And, and I actually did enjoy that, enjoyed being a part of that, where I was a CFO in the private sector at that time. It was fun seeing the financial things, stuff like that, that happened in the district at the time.
Thank you. Mr. Kretschmar?
I think what's expected of me is to be a good listening ear to any issue from students, parents, teachers, other board members. to any issue from students, parents, teachers, other board members, um what's happening in our community. I think a a big part of that is to create uni- unity instead of division uh by working together. I'm a pretty innovative uh kind of person, so I feel like I could bring uh, you know, new ideas to the table. Um, and also be there to listen to other ideas. Um, I want to, I think that uh one of the the things that we need to implement is to try to make um, you know, West Ada one of the best school districts in the country. Um, I'm a huge analytical guy, so any of the data and uh the budgets that come across in in the packet, um, I think that 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 suits me really well and I, you know, being able to spend time and and um take notes and and then present those those findings uh during the meetings and and have a good discussion on it. I think that's that's huge. Um, and also being empathetic uh to all issues and 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 the people that are associated with those issues. And the biggest thing is, you know, contributing um showing up for the meetings and 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 being present mentally and and physically. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I think this is a multifaceted question, and I think it's um important that I um we reach outside of really who we are. Um, because once um selected, it's important that that particular trustee, I'm really um taking role model for our students, for our teachers as a beacon and a pillar of our society to ensure that we're representing um each student the best possible way that we can at all times. And I think that we do that through ensuring that we are looking through a continual lens of um process improvement. There's always room for improvement in any aspect that we're doing. And I think that we should be evaluating policy through that as well, as well as relationships. And I think that promoting um a culture of diversity and inclusion at the district-wide level at our schools and our family and our communities is very important. I think the best way that we can accomplish that is to truly look at new resources and being um really somebody that's going to be that connector in our community from um reaching out for mayoral support and um looking at our local uh representatives, looking at task forces, looking um to bridge with other potential school districts, boards and task forces, um so that we can really ensure that we are best representing ourselves, looking for best practices, and ensuring that our community is really one. I think it's important that we have a unified front as West Ada's school district. But there's um more to that um as well. I think looking at um being that pillar of support in our community should really streak um stretch not only industry-wide, but uh also from a statewide um position as well, so really looking at Mars as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Olivon.
Thank you. Um, at a, at a high level, I think the expectations for this position are pretty simple, and that's to do what's in the best interest of West Ada students and teachers. Um, to get more specific, um kind of receive and consider input from the community stakeholders and make the best decisions possible. Um, you know, as far as you, when you're at meetings and and people are giving their opinion to the board, it's, it's one thing to listen, and it's another to really think about and consider other ideas, especially when they're opposite of the idea you have. And um, that's kind of what my my strength is, is to really think about and consider all possibilities and solutions. Um, another expectation is probably might might be one of the most important, is find find solutions to best allocate resources. I know the the budget is is a high priority and ultimately um we're we, we owe it to the taxpayers to best use their money um to best educate uh the students and the community. So, um, yeah, I would say that about sums it up. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Jarvis.
Thank you. I think the fundamental expectation under the way the district is set up is to represent the patrons of Zone Three, and that's not just parents, that's also, there's teachers, I'm sure, in Zone Three, and administrators uh and students, and there's just community members who are interested in seeing uh the best education, the best instruction delivered to the students. So that's important to keep into mind, that a trustee sort of serves as an intermediary between the public and the administration and the and teachers. Uh, I think there's also, it's been mentioned, but I think there's a a significant time commitment uh that you, you know, as any professional would, show up prepared to meetings uh to give it your best, to give it the amount of attention that it deserves and that it needs, uh to come up with creative solutions and ensure that the school district functions the way it should be. I also think that there's a need for a cool-headed approach. That I think that's what would be expected, especially when there's, because, you know, for teachers and teacher, they're dealing with their livelihood, and parents are dealing with the future of their children. There's, it it's no secret that sometimes things can get heated, and I think there needs to be a steady, calm, cool approach uh to analyze things uh from not just an intellectual level, but in a way that that uh keeps things steady. And then lastly, I I think that there needs to be a humble leadership. And what I mean by that is the ability to realize somebody else has a better idea than you. You know, we, everybody on a board of this size comes with different ideas, or when different stake stakeholders come with different ideas, it's important to recognize, not when you're wrong, but when there's a better solution out there, so that there can be more collaboration and and cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Osgood.
Um, to collaborate, listen, and do what's best for the students, teachers, and staff of the uh the district and the parents. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Dooley.
Hello, um, I want to echo what's already been said in that I think it's important to show up and be a good listener and take the time that's needed to do a good job. Um, I have sat on a board before, so I do understand some of those um time commitments and um workload. I want to be able to provide guidance to the district and um help us keep those high educational standards for our students. I see everything as an opportunity and a new adventure. Thank you.
Thank you, and lastly for this question, Ms. Buffy.
Thank you. I believe I will be expected to listen to all stakeholders at all levels, um be prepared for the meetings, and um really use a data-driven approach um in working toward improving um all of the facets that go into uh student achievement. Um, I do have several years of experience listening to the perspectives and concerns of parents, students, and teachers. While working at the Knight County School District, I constantly did um classroom evaluations and visited the schools and really um got to know what the issues were and how they tie in with the HR function. Um, I also served as the lead negotiator um with the union leadership on behalf of the Board of Trustees there. And I worked really hard to improve the contract um relationship because it was very volatile when I started and um eh, I bring, you know, professionalism and composure, and I feel like even when there are really heated um situations that you have to to remain calm and clear-headed so that um the, your mind is bringing up still the the best ideas and not um acting out of emotion. Um, so I also, as the chief investigator, I I dealt with a lot of um IEP or um 504 violations and um student discipline appeals and just a whole variety of things that you don't really think um HR function would do, but because um being there at the school district, I got a lot of exposure to the the school operations. So I think that will help me um prep, be better prepared to um carry out what is expected me, expected of me as a trustee. Thank you.
Thank you, and that brings us to our third question, which is, how can a board know if its goals are being accomplished and its policies carried out? And this round will begin with Ms. Haney.
Yes, thank you. Uh, how can we know that our goals are being accomplished? This goes back to working as a team and recognizing that the school board is not individual members, but collaborating together as a team and being able to provide uh insight to each other, bounce ideas off of everyone, but also to to have those teammates there to remind you that this is what we're working for and this is our collective goal. And part of that also comes from being an active listener to the community and to those affected by school board decisions, understanding what is desired out of those uh involved with the school district, of course, teachers, students, administration, the community, et cetera. And having that that open ear at all time and receiving feedback as an opportunity to better serve versus uh to to become defensive or to uh receive just criticism, but rather as an indication that some things might have to be revisited and maybe the overall goal envisioned is uh being achieved by looking at how have the decisions impacted the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chandler.
I'm back. Um, in 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 the both private sector and the public sector, particularly working on boards and working as a city manager for boards, um, I always felt my, like my uh goals were accomplished or the goals that of the board were accomplished when um a good time, when but when people would look at me and smile and say, "Thank you very much." And I guess I looked for a lot of thank yous as a, as a public manager. And um, and if those, and things were carried out well, um, I felt like the the public would tell me if they weren't uh when I was on the school board last and when I was working in the Chamber of Commerce as a uh, as a president. And I, I also took the time to to ask people uh how we were doing, what we were doing, and and what could we do to to make things different. And uh publicly, public was uh, is always uh, or or seems to be pretty good about telling, or at least they were in in myself when I was uh working on boards. And the public was pretty good about telling me whether I was doing well or not, or whether I was uh meeting the goals um that the public expected us to do. Um, but most of all, uh, as I started, I I think that I looked to the other board members to to see if we were getting where we wanted to be. And uh, and pu- uh, go- on a uh, on a board, they have a pretty good uh way of telling you whether you're doing good or whether you're doing bad. And um, and that that I I always took that to be um, or to know whether I was doing well or not. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Kruchmar.
I think one of the biggest things that we can do as a uh board is to have good metrics, to be able to measure um successes and failures. And in order to do that, we have to, you know, come up, you know, analyze the data, put it in charts, and see how things are trending. Another, another thing that we can do is make sure we're getting input from all the board members. And hopefully, then those members are speaking to people in the community and getting their input and seeing how things are going, you know, what things are working, what things aren't. And then um always, it's always a good idea to revisit topics and see how things are going. Um, i- if it's something that's over, see how we did. And and, you know, ask everybody, you know, for their input on how things can be improved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think um also acknowledging some of the same sentiments of um having good metrics and benchmarks, but I think the most important thing is that we also look both quantitatively and qualitatively. And looking at that, um, I think one of the biggest opportunities is to look at job satisfaction across the district. I think it's important that um our teachers are happy and that they're excited to be um spending as much time with our children as possible and um having those goal-oriented um relationships for children well established. And I think the best way we would know if we were having success in that is to really um see if we have union representative cohesiveness. I think that um if there's a unified front um as well um in our community, not only at the district level, but also with um all of our constituents across the board, I think that we'll really be able to see um if we're doing a good job or not. I think it's important to note that we'll never be able to satisfy a hundred percent of our um representative body, but at the same time, if we can get above ninety percent and have that as a benchmark and really know and understand what the community is looking for um from us, um, we can really tailor tailor those metrics and making sure that we're looking at them from a wide lens and making sure that we're really um not only outcomes focused um from our students, but also for um all of our district-wide employees um and constituents across the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olivon.
Thank you. Um, there's two ways to really, to really know if uh your goals and policies are carried out. Uh, one is simply by feedback. Um, you know, welcome people's input and seek out feedback from all the stakeholders being affected. Um, teachers, students, parents, um anyone else in the community. Um, and second of all, any goal, you know, needs to be specific, measurable, attainable. Um, policies should be clearly stated with objective guidance. And then the, the board needs to, I suppose, active, have a, have a way to actively monitor the progress and benchmarks of the the goals and adherence to policies. Um, if, if it can't be measured, then there's no way to know if if we're succeeding or failing. So, um, you know, there's, there's a difference between saying, oh, we want the goal of kids becoming smarter and we want kindergarteners to practice reading for so many minutes per school day. So I think being, being specific and and objective is is very important. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Jarvis.
So there's two questions there. The first is, how can a board know if their goals are being met? I think the best way to do that is to have specific measures, specific metrics, and and we say benchmarks in place, and I realize that's a quantitative approach. But when you're dealing with really anyone number greater than one, and certainly in a district of this size, you have to abstract the goals into a uh, into a, a way that can be measured by numbers. And it's interesting because nobody likes to be just a number, you know, kids individuals, the students are individuals and they're experiencing this stuff, and it's, and it's qualitative for them, and it's, and it's changing their lives. But ultimately, for goals, it needs to be uh something that you can measure. Now, as far as policies being put, uh whether uh the policies are being uh maintained, you know, when we've, when a board like this comes up, the policy is responsible, it's, it it it's necessary to listen to all of the stakeholders and get input to create the policy. But once it's been put in place, there needs to be an accountability. Now, nobody likes having the feeling of being look, someone looking over their shoulder constantly. That's not what we need, but there needs to be a certain level of trust between administration and the teachers and the board. Uh, but there also needs to be accountability, you know, maybe something like audits or something like that, just to ensure that the policies are being uh kept up. Thank you.
Thank you, uh Mr. Osborne.
Um, this is a hard one for me, never been on a board before, so um but I suppose at work, like when you get things accomplished um in a timely manner or the budget's met and everything's done right, um I suppose that would be meeting your goals. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dooley.
Um, I think that it's important to know if a goal is being met by the metrics. I think unfortunately, that's the only way we know if our students are doing well is what grades are they getting? Are they going on to college? Are they going on to trade schools? Um, we do have the option of teacher, student, and parent surveys. We need to make sure that the goals we're striving towards are actually important to the stakeholders and that we're making those benchmarks on the important goals and not an arbitrary goal. Um, how well we catch um a struggling kid is also important. Um, do we have a safety net for them? What programs are in place to keep them um doing well? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buffy.
I think that um of course, quantitatively, um our goals need to be measurable and realistic. Um, we need to use assessment data in in those metrics. Um, and my favorite, I think, is a little more qualitative, is um surveys. I I really enjoy um conducting surveys and analyzing the data um because I feel like you get such valuable information from all levels, um all stakeholders, that can be students, parents, staff, um support staff, teachers, and the community. So I I really think that um surveying tools are um are very important for um measuring if your goals are being met or not. And then I also think that it's important to consistently review your benchmarks, um make sure they're still relevant. And sometimes they need to be um adjusted for different reasons, so I think um that's also important. Um, well, to to determine if your goals are being met. Thank you.
Thank you, and Mr. Willets.
Mr. Chairman, uh trustees, superintendent, I think where we we look at first is is the district's strategic plan. Obviously, that's where we're going to start. That's where we're going to create the vision and the expectation of what we're going to accomplish here in our district. And then, of course, we need to look at the key metrics and and what are they telling us? Where do we need to to place resources? Where do we need to place effort, right? Um, you know, I look at the results that uh that you as trustees and as the superintendent and administration and teachers have accomplished over the past few years. The IRI scores um from from entry level into third grade are remarkable. Um, you know, twenty-five percent uh increase, leading the state uh in in development. And so you, as a board, um should very be very proud of of the educational excellence you're providing to the district. Now, can there be more to be done? Uh, of course, you know, as we look at that and and we're going to evaluate and um, right, there's nothing more important than evaluating how we're being successful. Um, the other thing is is the human element. I think it was brought up during this. Um, one of the boards that I sit on presently we're working to end family homelessness here in the Treasure Valley. And so in that case, how do I um look at success? You know, what metrics do I look at? Yeah, we can look about how much money we've raised or how much influence we might have in the community within the donors. But at the end of the day, it's going out and and finding a family in a car, living in a car, and getting them in a home. And so I think as a trustee, you've got to be out there listening. You've got to have boots on the ground, um seeing the buildings, what kind of condition they're in. Um, you need to to be, spend time in the classroom, listen to the curriculum, and then act on on what you find. And that's that's where we'll see true success. Thank you.
Thank you, and that brings us to our fourth question, which is, what is the public re- ah, excuse me, what is the public relations role of a school board? And we'll begin with Mr. Chandler.
Public relations goal?
Role. Yeah, the public relations role. Yeah, I had tongue twister there, sorry.
Well, I think that the they are the uh the they are those who are out front of of every policy and policy document that goes out to to the public. And although you may have great administrators and uh great staff, um those, they they cannot do their job unless the uh board is uh is together. And the board understands uh together what the what 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 they're trying to accomplish. And as uh is is and as long as they take the front on that, their administrators can be able to march forward and do the things that they uh need to do to to carry out the policies of the board. Um, and many, many times on the the boards that I've been a member of, um, the if if the board doesn't do it, the administrators will do it because they have to do it. They have to take care of the policies that are done, and then they have to, and if they're and if policies are not created by boards and and carried forth uh uh by the boards and the administrators, they're going to have to do it. It falls in their lap. And so um so um the the obligation of a board member, whether it be president or whether it be just a a major, a regular board member, is to carry the policies, understand the policies, and help the public to understand those. Thank you.
Thank you, uh Mr. Kretschmar.
I think the uh public relations role of a board member, um we need to be ultimately be a champion for our kids. Um, we need to be a listening ear for um all people involved. Uh, we need to be budget-minded, um because we are paying, we are spending our taxpayers' dollars, so we have to be mindful of that. And I ultimately believe we need to be the uh the face of calm in a storm, uh such as what we're going through right now with the COVID um crisis. Um, that's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell.
Wonderful. Thank you uh very much, Mr. Chairman. I think um the biggest PR role is to really seek to understand the and the consequences of the decisions and the policies that we're making. Um, and to have as many answers as possible, um to make sure that that trust is intact. We've spoken a lot about trust and accountability and listening. Um, but I think seeking to understand kind of the full implications of what that looks like. And I think secondarily, it's um I go back to my earlier comment of being a resource for our community. A lot about tying with mayoral support, um local representatives, um other nonprofits to bridge any gaps to our community. I think it's important that we lead our district um from a budgetary standpoint, but I think it's more um than just being fiscally and fiduciarily responsible for what's happening as well as outcomes for our students. I think um our students lean to us to really make a name and a face for who we are and what we stand for as Idahoans. And so I think that really does take a lot of partnership, and I would hope that we could expand that role as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, uh Mr. Olivant.
Thank you. Um, I think the the main role is is to be a good community leader and even a role model and example to students and other young people. Uh, the board is really the face of education priorities in in West Ada, and it it shows the public our commitment to education and and, you know, our students. Um, obviously, fiscal responsibility is is important to the taxpayers and and the voters. Um, but now specifically during uh the pandemic, um, we have to show the public that we we really care about the well-being of our teachers and students. That, I mean, education is uh, you know, a high priority, but it's difficult to teach and be taught when we're worried about health and safety. So um right now, we we really need to be focused on health and safety and and, like I said, show the public that that we really care about the well-being of of teachers and students. Thank you.
Thank you, uh Mr. Jarvis.
Thank you. I think the uh ultimate part for the board itself, public relations means listening to the public. It means having a finger on the pulse of what the community members and patrons of the entire district want. Uh, you know, that's important as far as public relations go. We talk about traditional public relations, you know, communications comes to mind. My understanding is that it's the role of the administration to ensure that the public is informed of what's going on with the district and what's going on with the schools. And I think Superintendent Rannells and the administration does a fine job of that, as evidenced by, you know, the announcements that come out during these bec- during this pandemic. But ultimately, it's the board that is accountable to the public, uh whether it's at an election or have ever forbid a, you know, a recall or something like that. But it's up to the the board now to be, like I said, held accountable to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, uh Mr. Osborne.
Yeah, um to be the face and voice for the students, teachers, parents, and the rest of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dooley.
I think the uh PR role of a board is very important. We need to um know and realize that we can't make everyone happy. Sorry, my camera's not on. Um, we can't be swayed by whomever is complaining the loudest. We need to pay attention to the evidence that we're seeing in work groups or from professionals. We need to create a calm environment that exudes confidence to all stakeholders, and we need to be firm and fair with our policies and continue on in the best possible outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buffy.
I think that the public relations role of a school board is to seek input from all of the um interested stakeholders um to not only establish but maintain strong policies. Um, I I think also, though, that um the board, the role not a role of the the board is to get involved in daily operations of the school district. That is um up to administration. And I also think that when um trustees receive complaints from um community members or parents, that they shouldn't um try to solve those on their own. Those should be forwarded to the um the the school um and just try to solve those issues at the lowest community level possible. Thank you.
Thank you, uh Mr. Willets.
Mr. Chairman, Trustees, Superintendent, um you know, the beauty of our schools is they're the heart of our community here. Um, you know, this is where we vote. This is where, on a Friday night, this is where we go to watch a ballgame or a a band performance. And so is there a PR role of the schools? You bet there is. As a trustee, you've got to be there. You've got to show up to those activities. You've got to shake hands. You've got to ask questions. That way, when people do have a concern with with a situation with a building or a teacher or or with their son or daughter, and they need to reach out, they don't know who to go to, they will know, I know so-and-so. Um, they know Trustee Johnson, and they could call her and say, "Hey, I've got this situation. Will you help me?" And that's that's what I think the real value of the public relations side of what the district um uh trustees do is that interface with the public. You, we represent parents, we represent students um within the district. So I I think it's key, obviously, building relationships with uh with the city, uh with the state, uh with our communities. Um, we've got kind of a unique challenge within West Ada because we serve so many different cities, right, and so many different communities. And so I think it's incumbent upon our trustees uh for us to go out and make that contact and build those relationships, um not just to pass bonds, um but to improve education and and student performance. And and of course, the safety right now, that's top of mind uh of our students. So, yes, very valuable role that that trustees play in in the public relations side. Thank you.
Thank you, and finally, Ms. Haney.
Yes, thank you. So the public relations role can be extremely challenging, but it's also so important to building the community's trust in the school board's ability to to best serve them and to to reach their goals. Uh, I also think that the school board, they model um the importance of education and bring more awareness to the importance of education and to uh running the schools well. Um, one important role is is fielding those complaints and concerns, which is extremely challenging. It can be very draining for sure, but it builds relationships. Um, and it creates that open space for people to be heard, which of course is going to continue to involve uh everyone in being involved in education and and putting more value on the schools and and what's happening in the schools. Um, in addition, with public relations, um effectively communicating the decisions that have been made and a little bit of the background as to why. And full transparency obviously isn't always a possibility with certain uh rules and regulations put in place, but a level of transparency that's appropriate so that the public knows why was a decision made, especially those that do have um received some mixed reviews. Uh, so for example, like fiscal decisions uh and things like that that have a big impact, you know, what was the the motivation behind that decision? What were the factors that went into it? And as part of that, reflecting on the improvements that have already been made. Here, here's how this has worked before. Here's the the progress that we've made by do making these types of decisions and really letting the public know what's going on and and keeping the public involved. Um, but I believe another important part of public relations is praising and supporting uh everyone in the community and in the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, and that brings us to our fifth question. What will be your top five objectives if elected to the school board? And we'll begin with Mr. Kretschmar.
Um, number one, uh making sure that the money that we're given for the school district to spend is spent wisely. Uh, number two, make sure that our students have all the tools and um classroom activities and and comfortable classrooms to to learn uh well in. Um, this includes things like HVAC and and um uh things that promote not only going to college, but going into the trades. Uh, number three, I I feel that um children that may not be keeping up with the um test scores and such, I feel that they they should uh not be um let down or or cast aside and said that, you know, they uh, we we need to have good plans in place to make sure that there's intervention intervention. Um, and to make sure that the test scores and everything uh that we're keeping up with at least the national average, if not higher. And to to make sure, number five is to uh make sure that we are um ultimately keeping our kids safe and and a healthy environment to learn in, uh both physically and mentally. So we have uh school psychologists and such that are making sure that uh you know, they're keeping their fingers on the pulse of how how each student is doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think first and foremost, um addressing safety from all um sides, making sure that our um teachers are safe. And then, um I think looking at accountability and transparency would be my second initiative. Um, and then looking at community outreach. I know that right now we have a shortage of substitutes. Um, you know, what does that look like from a community outreach? What other resources can we allocate? Um, what other resources can we find? What other resources can we find? How do we start to look at some of those marketing campaigns? And how do we attract some of that top talent and make sure that we're keeping it here and working with those administrators to do that day in and day out? Obviously, looking at allocations of funds, making sure that our fiduciary responsibilities are being met and making sure that all of those processes are very clear and that we're spending our taxpayer dollars as wisely as possible. And then lastly, just looking at testing outcomes. I think testing outcomes are essential, but there's more to student success than just what testing outcomes really look like. So how do we bring in some qualitative, measurable data points there as well, looking at critical problem solving to really be good community members and making sure that our students are actually participating in their communities? And those would be my five initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olivant.
Thank you. I mean, top of the list has to be getting through the pandemic safely and responsibly. Learning how to, I guess, as a community, learning how to learn safely remotely, you know, whatever needs to happen. Number two would be, obviously, we need to be fiscally responsible. Why is he spending money? We want to, you know, maintain the trust of the taxpayers and and you know, be be upfront and straightforward with that. Third, I would say, do our best to help get Idaho out of the, I know West Ada is pretty good, but Idaho as a state is you know, ranked bottom 10 nationally in education routinely. And one way to do that is is one of my fourth objective is I'm a big advocate for early learning. Full time preschool would be would be great. I know it it helped my children immensely. Got them a big head start. Got my oldest a big head start when she started kindergarten. And then when it comes to curriculum specifically, I guess two objectives would be. One, improving STEM education. I think technology is is going to be huge in the future, obviously. It already is, and it's only going to keep going that direction. And then two, the second part of that goal is teaching kids how to learn, how to figure things out for themselves. So often it seems like it's memorizing facts and not really figuring out how to do things for themselves. Anyway, that's kind of my my objectives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jarvis.
Thank you. In no particular order, number one would be the budget. Where the board is tasked with taking care of, being a steward of public funds, that's important to make sure that it's used wisely, but also used in a way that achieves the goals that are necessary to to be achieved. Number two, to build trust with the public, to listen to the public. I think that's a really important objective, as I've already talked about in previous answers. Number three, if there was a most important objective on this list, it would be student success. And that includes safety, making sure that they have a safe environment to learn in. And when that's not possible, making sure that the technology and the resources are there to ensure that they can still continue learning. Fourth, I would say, well, I would say, working with administration and the teachers. Because, you know, if if students are our future, the teachers are our greatest resource. And along with that, I would say, making sure that teachers feel that they have a safe place, that they're concerned or concerns are heard, and that they have a safe place to do their job and to teach our students. And then fifth, I would say, one of the objectives that I would have on this on the board would be to develop a working relationship with fellow board members, with my colleagues on the board. Because if any of these other problems are going to be solved, it's going to come from having good relationships with the people that you work most closely with, and that would be the people on the board. Now, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne.
I'm trying to reach out to him again right now.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Osborne is dealing with some family emergency issues and is not going to be able to rejoin us.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Then we will move on to Ms. Dooley.
Thank you. My top five objectives for this year would be to address the struggles that are occurring around remote learning. I understand there's already a plan in place, but we need to continue to keep our eye on that. We also need to bring up the confidence within the district about the ability to effectively manage learning in a pandemic. We are having a very divisive year, and we need to start working towards a goal that would show some unity within the district. We need to continue safety standards, not just this year, every year. We need to keep up our benchmarks and our educational standards. And going back to one of the things I've already mentioned was we need to address mental health with our students. We need to start educating them from a very much younger age about healthy mental wellness. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buffy.
My top five objectives would be, of course, to serve as a voice for my constituents and by doing so, to build trust and have some meaningful relationships and partnerships with the the community. Number two, I want would want to help ensure that our students and our staff have the are equipped with the tools that they need to succeed, not only in the pandemic, but every day after this is over too. Number three, I think improved relationships, communication, but of course, I have a union background, so I I would like to see improved relationships with the union leadership. Number four, I think I'm really big on the gear up programs and life skills. I think it's really important for students to not only be prepared academically, but to also be taught about things that we think are common sense, life skills, but then they graduate high school and don't know how to budget a checkbook or send a letter. So I think that just adding some curriculum around those life skills would be very beneficial. And I I think I think those would be my top objectives, which of course is a lot for a one year appointment, but it's there are so many things that are important to for all of the school board trustees to work towards. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willetts.
Mr. Chairman, Trustees, Superintendent. Obviously, our first priority right out the gate is the safety of our educators and our students, right? I can't believe we've gone this long without mentioning Dr. Pate, wherever he is on Twitter or what have you. Obviously, his recommendations from his team, I've had a chance to digest some of it. I certainly need to to learn more. But obviously, the superintendent's COVID task force, we've we've got to be aggressive in implementing the solid medical counsel that we're received. The other things we need to look at, obviously, is educational excellence. We can't take our eye off the ball. You know, the the damage of COVID will be short term, I think. The damage done to a first grader not learning how to read and going through school as they progress will impact them for a lifetime, for a lifetime, right? And so I think we've really, as as trustees, we've got to really focus on on remediation. That gap, those students that have missed out because of the situation we find ourselves in, we've got to make sure we bring them up to speed and make sure that they don't get lost in the system. The next thing we need to look at is growth. We we choose to live here because it's a wonderful place. But we've got to be very thoughtful about building schools, how we're going to handle the the influx of students and class sizes. That's that's absolutely critical to our teachers. And then the last thing you can't, you know, we're we're subject to budgets, so we have to look at funding sources federally, state and and local, how we approach that. So we've got a lot of work ahead of us and and some heavy things that we will you you need to lock arms as trustees and unite to to work through. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haney.
Yes, thank you. My top five objectives first would be student outcomes, not only evaluating the actual data and the numbers and working to improve them, but also stepping back and looking at the why. What's happening that's prohibiting the outcomes from meeting our targets or from continuing to progress? The second would be meeting the needs of children outside of just their educational outcomes, especially those that have additional circumstancing circumstances that, I apologize, that impact their life, such as children enrolled in special education, children at risk for failure, students at risk for mental health challenges, children that have safety challenges, if they have potentially abusive households, and of course, children in poverty and children that are food insecure. And and what are we doing to make sure that those needs are are met? Another would be the community involvement. So whether that is recruitment or donations, additional programs, just making sure that the community is involved. And of course, the budget, making sure that, you know, it's appropriate usage of the budget, but also being creative to accommodate the growth and meet the needs of the community and the students. And to reference current times, navigating this pandemic and from all aspects, the safety of the children as far as health and the transmission of the virus, navigating the challenges of remote learning. My screen froze, so I have no idea how much time I have left. And can you guys still hear me? Oh, 16 seconds. Okay, there we go. As I said, the pandemic, safety, remote learning, and then again, helping children access the resources they might be missing when they're not in school. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, for this question, Mr. Chandler.
Yes, first, first of all, one of the things that intrigues me about the the district now is is the what I think is good equipment, good facilities for all of our teachers to work with, for all of our students to work with. And I'd like to see us continue to do that and make that a priority. Along with that priority would be having the best teachers, which would probably require a number three goal to go along with that of of more more incentives or incentives for more innovation with the teachers. I also would like to see great, great administrators for us to find the best of administrators to be able to provide a a support for our teachers. And finally, when I first came to Boise a number of years ago, when I when I had four kids at home, our first our first thought in in coming here was was how do we find out where the best schools are? And at that time, it was a long time ago, but at that time, the schools with the top scores in the area, and most of you'll know this, if you know some history of the area, was Boise, Boise School District. And that has switched to some degree. I think we're kind of at a kind of at a tie, hopefully winning the race for the the top scores. And for that, I think that is the, I have it listed as number five as I as I write them down, but that is put those top scores will be put together by the four goals that I've mentioned before before this. Thank you.
Thank you. So as Mr. Stevens mentioned earlier, unfortunately, Mr. Osborne has had to withdraw from consideration, which takes us down to nine candidates. And unless there's a a concern from one of the candidates, one or more, I'm going to take this down to nine questions. I think the actually, the last two questions, I can sensibly combine so that we kind of make everything fair with the round robin. Are there any candidates that have a problem with that? Seeing none, then we will we'll move on. And the next question is, what long range plan would you want to implement for the school district? And it can be a variety of things, you know, growth or curriculum, staffing, parental involvement, you know, some longer range kind of bigger goal for the district. And we'll begin that with Ms. Russell.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For me, it really stems from securing additional funding to be able to offer different programs and different program programmatic needs based on age appropriateness, whether that's grade level, but really making sure that we have access to additional programs throughout the summer as well that we can attach our name to. I think that there are so many different household needs that we can really do better for our students with making sure that there's bridge programs throughout the summer and really making sure that those students with potential food insecurity, there's obviously been a pandemic, lots of other concerns such as abuse, neglect, those types of things. There's lots of working parents that still are below median household median and household income that definitely need some additional support. So if we could really find some allocated dollars in different community partners that can help us achieve that, I think that would be a wonderful direction for us to make sure that our students really are hitting those assessment outcomes and really making sure that they are keeping education at the front of their mind and really making sure that those summer bridge programs are available to everyone that we might have want to take advantage of those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olivant.
Thank you. Well, my my long term goals are kind of similar to my objectives. Obviously, preschool being implemented, early pre kindergarten education is is very important. There's been a lot of research and and studies done that it's that it's critical in in giving kids a leg up. Outside of that, raising teacher pay would be great. Anything we can do to make it more make it better to be a teacher, make people want to become a teacher, because it's really one of the most important roles in our in our society, frankly. And then, like I said, my objective, get Idaho out of the 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 bottom tier in the country. West Ada is West Ada is pretty good. It can always be better. I want West Ada to not not just be the the envy of the the state, but something to look up to. but something to look up to nationwide. And I think, you know, I've seen some of the, you know, the governor has dedicated some funding and made it his priority, and I hope that continues. And with additional support, we'll be able to make that happen. I would love to see it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jarvis.
Thank you. Despite my efforts over the last few weeks to become an expert on all things education, I still don't understand everything about curriculum. But one thing, and if appointed, I'm looking forward to learning and learning from experts and helping those around us. One thing about the curriculum is I would like to see more real world application, not just on the job training or vocational training, that's important. But I think preparing students to go be functioning and contributing members of society is important. And along with that, an increase in critical thinking skills and abilities. I think that's crucial at all times, but certainly now. I think another thing that, another long term goal of mine on the board would be to take into account the explosive growth that is taking place in this valley. As I mentioned in my opening, on the third, fourth generation of Treasure Valley native, my entire life has been growing. I don't see it slowing down anytime soon, you know. Even during this pandemic, home prices are just skyrocketing in Ada County. There's evidence of the explosive growth that we're having. There has got to be a way to take advantage of that growth and leverage it to increase, well, the funding to the schools in a way that doesn't burden homeowners and builders and everyone like that. And I think doing that will help with the third goal of mine, and that would be to make sure that our teachers' pay keeps up with the growth that's taking place in the valley. You know, as people move in from out of state, the cost of living goes up and people getting left behind are public servants. And that's unfortunate, so I'd like to see that addressed as well.
Thank you, Ms. Dooley.
Thank you. Long range plans for the district. I think all of the short term objectives I mentioned would qualify also as long term plans. But I would like to see an increase in the PTA. Both schools that I have been part of the PTA in, it's sparse. It's the same five people doing everything. And we need to increase that parent involvement factor, make it important to children's education that their parents are involved. And it may seem silly with a pandemic going on, but I would love to see the West Ada School District align with the Boise School District's schedule as an outside service provider of mental health services. There is nothing more troubling than trying to juggle multiple school schedules to get work in with kids. And I think that's an important factor in long term growth of a district is that you look at what else is going around on in your valley and you try to align with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buffy.
So the long term plan, I think overall would be to improve academic performance at all levels, K through 12 and even pre K. And at the same time, address the rapid growth because that's going to have, continue to have a huge impact on all of those other things that go into improving student achievement. I also think finding ways to increase funding revenues, grants, scholarships, that sort of stuff is important as to lead into increasing teacher salaries and substitute teacher salaries. Another thing is really important to me is increasing the community outreach and to really put a focus on the parent piece and the student and parent accountability. I think it's really important for them to also basically carry their weight. An example I can give is the Nye County School District. We had a community who begged the board and the district administration to implement a four day school week. They promised that their test scores would go up and that their attendance would go up. And so we held them to that. We said, okay, you know, parents and students, this is what you want. You need to do the work to show us that it's going to work. Okay? So it did for about a year or two, and then, sure enough, attendance started to drop again, test scores started to drop again. So we went back to that community and said, hey, parents and students, you told us you were going to do this so that you could have your four day school week. And so we made them work again at improving those where we were going to have to change it back to a five day school week. So I think it is so important for that parent involvement piece and accountability. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willetts.
Mr. Chairman, trustees, superintendent, I would only have one long term goal in my role as trustee, and that's innovation. I've been blessed enough to tour schools in three different continents and schools across the United States to look at what separates them. And it's one thing, it's innovation. Okay? And so we, as trustees, as being leaders in the community and education, and I'm very proud of what we've done in West Ada. I hold this up against anyone within the state in terms of education excellence. But that is fleeting. We have to continue. We must continue to innovate. And that has to come from the superintendent and it has to come from the board. We have to be three steps ahead. A quick example, I served, as you know, I raised money for the district for a number of years. During the Great Recession, I went out to businesses that were laying off employees and asked them for money. And that was challenging. But what I did and what we did, and I don't want to take all the credit. We had a great board member and great staff and great, obviously, the teachers would earn that, every dollar of that. But what business leaders wanted to hear was innovation. And as a foundation, as a West Ada Foundation, we brought innovation into the classroom. And that's what we need to continue to do. And obviously, as a trustee, you and I would play a role in that, lock arms and be united in creating this vision of what our schools can be, not just how good we are today. And so only one focus, a singular focus, and that's innovating within our schools. And we can do that at the teacher level. You know, let's let them try new things, right? As a trustee, let's give them a little bit of reins, let them try new teaching methods, new curriculum, what have you. So anyway, it's important to innovate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler.
Sorry, I forget to poke the buttons there. I went to a conference a number of years ago that was on budgeting and finance. And I said, well, that's something I want to look at on private or public sector. Went in and the person who was giving the talk and was the budgeting and finance director of what we called the Meridian School District then. I was pretty proud of that. And I think that is what I can include, continue to include in a long range plan for the district. Also, within that, the strong maintenance and operations, school grounds and things look good. And also teacher incentives for more innovation. And those three things together come together for what I hope after this pandemic ends would be a thing called happiness and tranquility of things such as going to a ballgame that I don't have to be dressed up in a mask and stuff like that to go to and that I can go enjoy at a basketball game, the same thing, and go to a graduation, the same type of thing. That would be the ultimate in happiness and reaching a goal and a long range plan. Maybe that's not as long range. I hope that final one isn't as long range as I'm hoping as it seems to be going. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, for this question, Mr. Crutchmark.
So one of the long range plans, the most important one I want to see is our budgets increased so that we can match or exceed the best education levels in this country. I want to see Idaho at the top of the, at least in the top 10 best states for education. This includes, you know, increased teacher pay, better technology, one on one help if needed, reducing the number of students per teacher. We need, because of the growth in this country or in the state, especially in this county, we need, we're going to end up having to build new schools and things like that. So, or at least replacing schools because some of the buildings are getting pretty old. As a board member, I think that we should pressure the government to allocate more money to meet these goals, especially in Ada County. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just realized that I inadvertently missed Ms. Haney. I apologize about that. So it's your turn now, Ms. Haney.
Thank you. I understand. My long range plan would be to successfully manage the growth of the valley. I think it's safe to say that it does not plan on slowing down anytime soon. And I would like to see that done without the children bearing the brunt of that stress on the school district and without it impacting the quality of the instruction. And that comes from both funding and from recruitment. Certainly, being able to build schools as we need so that class sizes are manageable, both for the children's health and safety and for their social interactions, but also that they can receive the proper instruction that they need. With staffing, increasing intervention efforts, early identification of potential delays or disabilities, providing more individual and differentiated instruction as needed for children and the proper implementation of IEPs and 504s. And also to better meet the needs of the growing community through additional programs such as after school activities, summer programs, tutoring programs, childcare, possibly full time preschool. And those different things that are definitely not easy to implement, especially under budgetary restrictions, but that will continue to meet the needs of the valley as we just keep growing. Thank you.
Thank you. And that brings us to our next question. During the pandemic, what do you feel the district has done well and what could be approved, improved upon? And we will begin with Mr. Olivant.
Well, as far as what they've done well, it seemed like in the summer they had a good plan. You know, start out remote and go from there, and then it it got adjusted and changed and the green, yellow, red had different meanings at different times. And, you know, I think the plan should have had contingencies in there where depending on an objective criteria, then it moves to this or that or alternate methods. And so I'm just, I'm just kind of, my main concern and one of the main reasons why I'm here is that in March, we determined that school was too dangerous to go to. So they, you know, we essentially canceled the rest of the year. And as cases have gone up, we're doing more and more in person learning, which seems like the exact opposite of what we should be doing. I know there's a lot of outside pressure and I know the, you know, it's good that the school board is is staying focused and trying their best to kind of ward off that pressure. But it seems like the influence is getting to the board and the squeaky wheels are making a larger impact than they should. So I would like to see, I guess, stronger leadership, you know, make a decision that is objectively the best as far as health and safety and stick to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jarvis.
Thank you. The thing that the district has done well during this pandemic is bringing in Dr. Pate and his team and adopting the hybrid plan. I think that it addresses the facts, just the way, the things that I like about it are that the K through three, the K through five, that they, with the lower transmission rate, can be, can do in person learning. And it's almost a miracle that in a year of such bad news, that the people who suffer most from remote learning are the people who need in person learning, or are the people who transmit it the most. What I'm saying there is, it's good that the K through five students can be in person and do in person learning. Also, with that plan, I think that the flexible case by case approach works out really well, as evidenced by the fact that one of our high schools had to be closed today. But it did not mean that my kindergartner had to come home and try to learn his ABCs on an iPad. I think that that flexible approach and bringing Dr. Pate in was a good thing. Now, the thing that the district could have done bad, and I'm not laying blame on anybody's feet, anybody's feet, because nobody has dealt with the pandemic for more than 100 years. We don't know what we're doing. We're trying to figure this out. I think that there could have been better communication at the outset. You know, as Dr. Pate noted at the last board meeting, or whenever it was, that teachers reasonably inferred, and teachers and parents and the public in general, reasonably inferred that going into the red status as a community meant that schools would go completely remote. And because we, there were so many unknowns at that time, that ended up not being the case. And because there was this lack of communication, and frankly, we just didn't know because we had never dealt with this, there was an obvious uproar and understandably so. I'm not blaming anybody for reacting the way they did because it makes sense to believe one thing and to have the rug pulled out from underneath you or to at least feel that the rug had been pulled out from underneath you. But I think that what I'm going to call a lack of communication was remedied by this new plan that has been put in place. And I have hopes that it will work out in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Dooley.
Yes. I think that the district handled the pandemic. They got blindsided in the spring, and it's understandable that there was a pretty big learning gap there in the spring. I think we could have managed it better, but given the circumstances, everybody was throwing things together, trying to make something work. I think we've seen some higher educational standards this fall and a lot of innovative minds have gotten together to get kids back on track. I think we're struggling with maintaining a consistent schedule. I happen to have a flexible work schedule, as does my husband, but I can't imagine what it's like for parents that have shift work or that only have evenings and weekends available, or they're off one day a week. You cannot homeschool a child, and for lack of a better reason, word, that's what parents are having to do on remote days. And we don't have the technology as a parent that we can monitor our children. I'm new to Teams. I'm still struggling with it. Every time I try to help a kid with something, I'm learning something new about Teams. And that's not a good position to be in when you're trying to get homework done. You know, we spend an awful lot of time in the classroom teaching the kids the technology. Well, long term, that's going to be helpful to them to see the use of that technology. Short term, we're spending an awful lot of time on that. We need to come up with some innovative ways to circumvent the technology when it's not working. And most importantly, pick a schedule and stick to it as long as it follows health guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buffy.
Well, I felt like the plan was good and well
Well, I felt like the plan was good and well-communicated before the school year started. I was really pleased with that. I was a little frustrated with the, the decision to do the first week, which is the four days remotely, but got on board with it. But of course, the first week was very frustrating with all of the IT issues. And there was communication, but I felt like it was a little delayed. I joke around and say, I only cried once before I realized I wasn't, it wasn't our issue in our household, because I was so frustrated that I couldn't get all my kids in their classes. And so it was a very, very frustrating week. I'm really excited about the, the direction that the plan is going in now. I do agree that our elementary students need to be in school as much as possible, as much as it is safe to do so. I, I feel like, you know, we have to, the IT problems are always going to be there, and we just have to continue working on it and building that capacity, and then always just working towards improved communication. But I have seen a really big improvement in the communication since that. And I tell you, my experience with the school admin, teachers, and support staff at my children's school is they're so committed, and they're, they're willing to do anything and anything they can to make sure that our kids are receiving the best education that they can receive right now and doing it safely. So I, I'm blown away by them and their ability to continue working through this the best that they can during the pandemic, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willetts.
Mr. Chairman, Trustees, Superintendent, I think you guys have done a phenomenal job. You really have. And unfortunately, the trustee role is a thankless job, you know? It's a good thing that pays good, right? You know, I, there's no way that I could go back and arm-shore quarterback of what should have been done and not. That's just not fair. You know, the first thing, you passed a levy during a pandemic. That's pretty awesome. I mean, that's, that's pretty impressive. You created a plan. It was fluid. Things came at you, and you adjusted. You listened to the medical experts. You listened to parents. So I, candidly, during my service on the Red Cross Board, you know, we, we deal in crisis, right? We have a lot of things coming at us. Some information is correct, some of it's not. And you, as a leader, you have to make the best decision in the moment. And that's, that's the thing that you, I think that you, as trustees, have done. Now, can we go back and do after-action reports and say, what, you know, could we have communicated better? Of course, right? Could we have started earlier? Who knows, right? Those are, those are difficult questions to ask after it's happened. So I, I would just, you know, in reflection, I would just compliment these trustees, US trustees, including Trustee Smiley, for the leadership you provided in the community and continue to provide. I really don't have anything that I could point out.
Thank you, Ms. Haney.
Yes, thank you. I, to echo one of the fellow applicants, we haven't dealt with a pandemic before. And I say "we" because it's everybody. It's not just schools, it's not just parents, it's clearly, it's all of us. And so what the district has done well is they've done what they can. And that can easily sound like a cop-out, but it's also, all we have is what we can do. There is not a right or wrong answer. There's been different aspects of the addition of the virtual schoolhouse, the school lunch program during the summer, and for those hybrid days, the one-to-one devices, a quick response with the IT team when those are having some glitches. The school has come up with a great plan for safety as far as masks and distancing. At my kids' school, they alternate what days they go to the cafeteria to limit the numbers. These are all things that have, have gone really well and are definitely, you know, we're making do with what we have. As far as what could be improved, I know there's some frustration with the flip-flopping of schedules. And one of the things that I think is important is just that really clear communication. There's a lot of confusion about, but we're this in red, we're this in yellow, and so on, and being more transparent and vulnerable in the way of saying like, we don't truly know what everything is going to look like, because we don't know how to navigate school in a pandemic, and that nothing is finite. And yes, we might have this plan for red, yellow, green, but it's not a guarantee that everything's going to go exactly as it should. And an additional thing to improve on, as has been said in many of board meetings, is continuing with teacher education to build our capacity with virtual teaching. I think even once we are past COVID and a pandemic, virtual learning is, it's here to stay. So increasing that opportunity for the teachers to learn and grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler.
Yes, it's an easy one. I'd say first off, I'd say amen to Mr. Willetts and Ms. Haney's comments, and, and that with what we've learned, what I would recommend if I was on the school board, is that we take everything that we've learned, put it in a nice big binder, and get ready for the next time it's going to happen. And so we don't have to go through it all again as far as a lot of the learning curve. Other than that, I think the board's done a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crutchmark.
As far as what the district's done well, I think one of the, the big things is I, I think that their, their communication was pretty open with parents from the get-go. I kind of joked on how many emails I was getting almost on a daily basis from the school district, between the school district and the actual school. I really, I really think that the free, the free lunch program when we were in quarantine and stuff, I think that really helped some of those parents that are struggling financially. And getting devices for each student before school started, that was a big deal, to make sure that we could do the remote learning. And then later on, getting all the safety measures in place to bring the students back to school, to make sure that, you know, whatever the classrooms needed, they, they had that, that stuff there to, to make sure our kids were safe enough to go back to school. As far as improvement goes, my son had the opportunity to be part of the, the summer pilot program for intervention students. And that was in Joplin Elementary. He, Mr. Brown was the teacher of that class. And there was quite a few things that I think that went really, really well in that. The program was six weeks, which, which leads me to our first one, is I think that even at the elementary level, I do believe that summer school should be a thing. I do believe, and this is comparing the way that teaching is being done now versus in that intervention program. Mr. Brown was in front of the camera or teaching on another screen for three straight hours. My son now, he might get an hour of actual teaching time in remote ports, and I think that that needs to be changed. Thank you.
Thank you, and Ms. Russell.
Wonderful, thank you. I think the one, most wonderful thing that the board really did was that we led by example. I think most things that we try and teach our children, especially during this pandemic, is really positivity, to be resilient, to really focus with ingenuity, and really take a look at how we're reacting to things that we're not in control of. So I think from that standpoint, the board did a wonderful job in really showing our students and our constituents really how to act and then just to be adaptable. The other thing that I really loved is that we really took advantage of task force, and we really put that best foot forward by finding subject matter experts in different arenas and really making sure that we were collaborative in that way. One thing that I think that we could have done more of is actually using those task force to represent student populations, teacher populations, as well as parent populations. I think sending out surveys is one effective way to do that. But I do think some of our families also don't have the technological component of that, especially some of our refugee families. And so if we can convene some maybe task force that are more representative of the entire population, I think that would be helpful. Additionally, I would really love to see some cohesiveness between reaching out to the other neighboring school districts in both Kingan County as well as Boise, just to make sure that we have a unified front. I don't think now is the time to be too cavalier in what we're trying to do. We want to stand out for being the best of the best. That's undoubtedly one of our goals. But in a pandemic, I think it's important that we're not only using our own resources, but additional resources as well. So the only thing that I would have loved to see more of is more of that collaboration with some of our neighboring counties as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question is, during this pandemic, tensions have run high. Are you prepared to deal with the scrutiny from teachers, students, and parents? And we'll begin with Mr. Jarvis.
Well, I've watched some of the board meetings and some of the things that the teachers and parents and students have come up with, and I don't know if anybody can be prepared for that. But, and, and I, and I'm not saying that to be, make light of the situation, because there are some seriously deeply held opinions when you're dealing with your, your livelihood or the health and safety of your family or your child, or, and just not even in the pandemic, in other times, there's some seriously, some tough issues that are faced. I personally think that I am prepared to deal with that. As I mentioned, I'm a prosecutor by trade. Just today, I had two phone calls where people were yelling at me. It comes with part of, it's part of the job. And so it's one of the things that I would be able to come in on the board. And, and when you're having some, some tough situations, that people and emotions are high, it's important to still listen to their concerns and what they're saying, and to listen to their ideas and their suggestions, even though they might be delivering it in a way that can be tense. And so I personally think that, you know, if I'm appointed to this board, I'll be able to handle that and go forward in a way that helps move the district forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dooley.
Yes. I'd like to say that my short answer would be yes, but if consideration is truly given to this question, the reality is I could probably handle it. I've got a mental health background. I'm used to dealing with lots of different personality and character traits, crises, and being able to problem-solve and get myself through those crises and still help somebody. I think ultimately, people just want to be heard. They want their concerns out there. They want to know that somebody's listening and that the best possible situation is, or the best possible outcome is made of the situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buffy.
I feel that I am prepared. I'm very patient and calm in the most high, highly uncomfortable situations. I am a workplace mediator, and I served as a district's lead negotiator for several years, so that has prepared me for some very uncomfortable and high-tense situations. I would say that my composure was tested, put to the test during like negotiations or mediations, more so in the beginning of when I took over HR for the school district, just because there was such a, it was a really horrible relationship between the union leadership and the board and admin when I took over. And so I dealt with a lot of meetings where there was yelling and fist slamming and document throwing, and I, I continued to just keep my professionalism, keep my composure in check, and just worked through it, and just worked on building trust with them and mutual respect. And finally, I wore them down. I really did, so that those kinds, those types of behaviors weren't as common as we went forward. But it is, it is very difficult, and there's very, there's great times to do recesses or take a break, because when tensions are getting very high, then just being able to step out of the room for a couple minutes and take a deep breath really can do a miracle there. So I, I feel like based on my, my experience in human resources and even serving on my HOA board, there was a lot of tension with the reopening our pool for this summer, and, and I led that endeavor, and a lot of people were happy with it, and a lot of people weren't happy with it. So I was just very, did the best I could to answer all of their questions. I manage our HOA Facebook group, so I just addressed their concerns and did the best, let them know we were doing the best we could. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willetts.
Mr. Chairman, Trustees, Superintendent, crisis and heat is called a Tuesday for me. In my line of work, I'm an executive for a company that does roughly $150 million in business in 20 states. So every day, I'm faced with very difficult decisions where there's no clear which way to go. And so I think in those moments, as we face crisis or tough decisions, we need to go back to our, to the basics, right? What is it that we're trying to accomplish? What's in the best interest? We need to look at the data, you know? One thing that we haven't spoke about, and I hope people watching in will look at the COVID dashboard that the district has put together. The data there is extremely helpful. It's a little scary to look at, but, but I think it really shows to, to what the situation is. But, but back to your question, how do I handle conflict? How do I handle criticism? Again, it's something that I am very comfortable with, and I've made my career in that space within the risk management and within the insurance industry. To give you an example, obviously, sitting on the Red Cross Board, we, we deal with a lot of fluid situations. We might have a fire, and certain parties might want certain things immediately. We might have misinformation out there, and there'd be criticism about what we choose to do and the decisions we make in that leadership role. But you've got to be confident and take the best data that you can in the moment, and then, of course, do the right thing. And where does the right thing come from? It comes from your heart, right? Knowing what, what's in the best interest of those that you were called to serve. And I would take that same approach, being on the board. I would, I would embrace criticism. I think that's one of the, one of the good things that came out of COVID. Parents are very active right now. They want to be involved. They want to say, and it's important for us to, as trustees, to embrace that and harness that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haney.
Yes, thank you. I am prepared to deal with the high emotions and the conflicts that arise from such a massive issue as a global pandemic. I work in human services. I supervise the state's largest early intervention program, program that is mandated by the Department of Education. And as part of that, I have had to work to transition my program to a telehealth model as we tried to figure out the safety of going in the home and providing services to young children. As part of that, I received a lot of feedback from parents and staff and dealt with a lot of challenging situations and some pretty high emotions, to say the least. But I was still able to support, but also enforce the policies that were put in place. I also strongly believe that when a decision is soundly made and data and evidence and collaboration have been used to make those sound decisions, it's easy to stand behind the decisions that you've made and to present a united front as you navigate through addressing feedback and concerns and complaints. And I have had to do that for many years in my role, and I feel very confident in my ability to handle such feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler.
Yes, I'm on the phone here again. What I found in dealing as an administrator and as a, a board member, that there are tensions to be, to be had, and I did in fact have, that did in fact have effects, some effects on my business. I wouldn't say they were negative. They started negative and was able to talk and reason and say, here's what the board is doing, here's why we're doing it. And, but, but it does have an effect. And in the district's case, when I was on the board with the district, it had an effect with parents more than it had an effect with with teachers or anything like that. And so but I, at that time, I was a parent with four kids. Now I'm retired and the kids are gone and I sold my business. So I'm prepared for those things and and don't find them all that distasteful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kretschmark.
So I've I've worked construction for 16 years and I've dealt with some very tense situations that people are frustrated, angry, emotional. And a lot of these people have very intense personalities. And I can say from the time I exited college to where I am now, I've grown quite a bit. Biggest thing is to listen to the the people that are talking in the situation, find adequate ways to deescalate and big one is to be empathetic. And let people know that you are there to work for them and with them in a cool, calm manner. And to lead by example. Don't let your emotions get the best of you to better serve the board and the public. That was a huge thing that I brought out of working construction is if you can keep that level head, chances are you're you're going to end up rubbing off on those other people. And I have always felt that that was that was a huge benefit in my experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's something that I'm well suited for, like many of the other applicants and candidates. I have HR background as well as being a business owner. And I think that forces you to really evaluate who you are as a leader. And I think a lot of the emotional distress that our country and our state and our community is really feeling and that divisiveness should really be met with being a servant leader. And that's how I would definitely categorize myself. And there, there's two components of that. You're a servant and you're a leader. And I think at some point in time, you just have to make decisions. And as many of the other colleagues on this application panel have really highlighted that you do have to make decisions. They should be factual, but at the same token, just met with compassion and empathy. I've felt this and feel very well versed in it as I have served as chairwoman for Serve Idaho, which is once again an appointed commission by the governor's office. And so I feel that through those tumultuous times, I've already been really well seasoned for this as I have served as chair throughout this pandemic and have definitely learned a lot about who I am as a leader and how I represent our community and the state of Idaho through the governor's office. Thank you.
Thank you, and Mr. Oliver.
Thank you. Well, as a father of two young daughters, I'm pretty used to implementing unpopular policies and getting screened at and staying the course. I have the ability to stay calm and collected. I can be criticized and yelled out without reacting. And yet still be able to put myself in the other person's shoes, see where they're coming from. And you know, even though they're, you know, someone might be worked up and quite emotional, they could still have a valid perspective that needs to be considered. So, yeah, I think I would have no problem handling any kind of criticism or yeah, harsh harsh views. Thank you.
Thank you, and this brings us to the question everyone's been waiting for, the the last question. How will you contribute to building the trust of the community, including of our teachers and families? And we'll begin with Ms. Dooley.
Ms. Dooley, we can't hear you right now. Your microphone seems to be off.
Sorry about that. I pushed the button. It just didn't take. I would like to be part of the effort to rebuild trust. I think we have a little bit of an issue with the pandemic. A lot of different opinions out of there, out there. And people just want to be heard. I think that's they want to be heard, they want to be listened to. As long as we can provide that to them and show them the evidence that they are being heard, the survey results, that they can see how many different opinions are out there and that we are doing the best that we can with the evidence available to keep the children safe and to keep us moving forward with high standards for our education. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buffy.
I feel that I can contribute to the trust with our parents and staff by listening, listening to understand. And that means that even if I go into a situation or issue thinking one thing, that I'm not close minded, I can hear the the information, the data, the different perspectives, and that I can change my perspective or modify it and make it stronger. So I feel like trust, you have to earn it. So building those relationships, it starts with listening and then it also starts with doing what you say you're going to do. So if I tell someone I'm going to look into something or work on something for them, I'm going to do it because that's another thing with building trust, like that you've got to follow through. It's more than just telling them, oh, yeah, I'll take care of that for you. I I feel like that's going to go right back to my skills as a workplace mediator and as an investigator with the the school district. I worked with so many different shareholders within the district, the parents and the students and the staff. I had a really close relationship with the special education director, transportation director. I just had understanding how the different programs work. I think that also me bringing that experience to the table, I think will also build some trust initially as well. I I loved doing new teacher orientation and substitute training for our teachers because I got to see how excited they were. And then I got to visit their classrooms throughout the school year and see how they were doing. And they didn't quite look as energetic and youthful at the end of the school year that they did in the orientation. But it was just so great to be able to follow them through that and really build those relationships. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willetts.
Mr. Chairman, trustee superintendent, again, thank you for giving us time tonight. It's been great hearing this discussion from these other candidates. So many great ideas, so much passion for education. It's it's an honor to be included with this group for sure. Probably want to start where or finish where I started. I think my background in public health and leadership here in the community, both at the at the local level as well as the state level uniquely qualifies me to serve with you. I I think my risk management background is is going to be key and well used. And then lastly, I think of vision, you know? If we've got parents and patrons listening in, the commitment I make to you is is to continue and push for student achievement. I will never be satisfied. And and you will see a clear vision as I as I lock arms and and build unity within the board of trustees. We will deliver those results. The the last thing I would share and probably most most important to me, my mother was a lifelong educator. She taught first grade. And and I remember as a kid watching her correct papers up until 10 or 11 o'clock at night. She was a dedicated, dedicated professional. She loves to teach. She taught me. And those are the kind of teachers that we need. As trustees, we've got to make sure we remove barriers, find the funding and get out of the way of our excellent professional teachers and educators. Again, to the to the trustees, thank you for giving me consideration and and I am definitely excited about the future of of the West Ada School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haney.
Yes, thank you. Building trust is is tricky because it takes a lot of patience and a lot of understanding that it's not going to happen quickly, especially as we navigate such a stressful and frankly, emotional time as as dealing with COVID and all the challenges that come with it. But a huge piece, in my opinion, is being present and being active and responsive. So responding to communication in a timely manner in in a way that's individualized, not a blanket response, asking questions, following up with people. My program underwent a major change in our structure. And as we navigated through that, I would ask my staff, you know, how's it going? And or, you know, what's your concerns? And they would give me like a complaint and then I would say like, how, what could I do to help you? And it's amazing that the feedback that people said, just asking, what can I do to help you? Or what would help that improve for you? How how could we work through this and and using that partnership? And I also really like the idea of a use of surveys and getting individualized feedback from people with open comment sections, but also doing so in a way, a variety of ways to help parents and teachers receive the survey and respond to the survey. I know it was an issue earlier in the school year that a survey accidentally went to junk mail. And then, you know, I think there was less than a week to respond. So some of those little glitches that sometimes people view as maybe purposeful or manipulative when really, you know, it's just, we're just working through it. So that is really what I think could contribute to building trust. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler.
Yes, I I've had the privilege over the last couple of decades or more of working in business and working with with boards and and groups. And I've been very fortunate in that. There's been times when people haven't been happy with me because some of the decisions have been made or with the groups that I've worked with. But I I find now here where my my career has ended, that I still have good friends and there's a lot of people who who didn't agree with me at the times, who who now are still my friend, still disagree with me on the decisions I made, but I managed to make long term friends out of them anyway. And I think I could bring that to the board. I think I can be helpful to you in that and with the number of people that I've worked with in the community. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kretschmark.
So one of the biggest things that I've found about trust, dealing with clients of all across the country and and other other countries also, one of the biggest things I've found is being transparent. You know, if if you can't show that you're doing something and and prove it, then then you're leaving a lot of questions to be had. Another big key thing is to keep an open mind, listen to everybody involved, keep an open forum, you know, build those relationships. And then and and then prove that to prove to those people that you have been listening and and follow through when you say you're going to do something. And when we make a mistake, apologize and mean it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would echo a lot of the same sentiments as the other candidates in talking about removing barriers by listening, communicating with as much transparency as possible and really looking at overall how you're going to find access. I think we can say that I want to be accessible. But I think the way that I would do that is really leveraging other local representatives. If we have local parents, constituents, teachers, I'm sure that they're not only speaking to us. And so just making sure that people know that you're visible in the community by attending other town halls and making sure that you're reaching out to your local representatives, whether that be city council members or other board members alike. But really just making sure that you're attending the events that they're attending, making sure that you're seeing what their initiatives are and really being present for those conversations because the overlap, I think, is pretty great. And so if people can see that you're invested in your community outside of this role as well, I think that will go a long way in really developing a deeper level of trust because I think there's multiple levels of trust. And I think a lot of people right now are truly just sitting at that, I'm just trusting what I'm hearing or I'm looking at the data and I'm trusting that. But I think we can do a lot better job of creating full community trust through some of those activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Thank you. Well, as far as building trust, what I would say is is kind of what what I look for in a government leadership. They need to be open minded, consider consider different ideas, have the ability to change their mind, being able to admit when they're wrong. People really dislike when better ideas are presented, but the the bad idea wins because it was the idea of the person who makes the decision. It should be almost like a meritocracy where the best idea wins, not the person in charge wins. But also, when these tough decisions are made, I think it would be great if the board or or whoever explains to stakeholders in the public the reasoning behind the decision. You know, what was considered, the pros and cons, why they did what they did. I think a lot of people just see this decision was made and they don't know why. And so, you know, when there's a a lack of information, people are going to fill in the blanks. And I think being a little more transparent in that regard would help a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, and Mr. Jarvis.
Thank you. When the question was asked, I wrote down my thoughts. And I think every candidate since then has said the exact same thing that I had written down. And that's because these principles are tried and true and universal. And that's that we need two way communication between us and these interest or these these constituent groups, the teachers and the families. We need to be available to hear what they have to say. And if I was a member of the board, I would do my best to be available and to make sure that people feel heard so that they know that we took into account their thoughts and opinions when making a decision. And I think the two way street means that there's a an onus on members of the board to make sure that people understand our reasoning and what we had to, what we relied on in making those decisions. If I did my math correctly, I think I'm the last candidate to speak. And I I let off by saying I felt compelled to serve because I care deeply about our community and I care deeply about frankly, our country. And this is the sort of thing that doesn't get talked about a whole lot in our in our country right now. People from our community coming forward, willing to put their names out there, to put their professional lives on the line to do what's best for the community around them. It's this has been an uplifting experience for me. And there's obviously some qualified people on this list and people who are jumping into it for the first time. And it gives me heart. I think the board will make the right decision. I don't think they can do any wrong here. But thank you, Mr. Chairman, trustees, superintendent Reynolds, everyone else that's been in attendance. It's been a good experience. Thank you.
Thank you, and I thank you all. And I'm actually so impressed that everyone was right on the on the spot with with doing their answers. It made this go a lot more efficiently. And I appreciate that and I appreciate the discussion very much. This brings us to the action portion of the agenda. I have a slide here. Well, we'll move ahead and there's one action item, which of course is the appointment of the candidate for the vacant seat in Zone Three. And at this time, I would entertain a motion or a nomination.
Chairman Newhart?
Trustee Klaufenstein.
First, first, before I give the nomination, I just want to say thank you to everybody. I was very impressed with the discussion this evening. And it also gives me heart that so many people came forward to give their best this evening. I truly appreciate this. And to be frank, we had some very good candidates. We have to choose one and I, I frankly felt one candidate rose to the top for me. And I would like to move forward with Ms. Kimball-Russell.
Thank you, Trustee Klaufenstein. Is there a second? Hearing none, the nomination dies for lack of a second. Is there another nomination?
Mr. Chairman, this is Trustee Ozuna.
Trustee Ozuna.
You know, I would be happy to serve with, you know, all of these applicants. I think that we have such a great pool to choose from. One of the things that I was considering, in fact, one of the applicants said this, this is a one-year appointment. The position in Zone Three will be up for election next year. Given that the learning curve is so huge, and one of the things that we lost when Mr. Smiley left is his background in education. Ms. Buffy isn't an educator, but I think that her experience at, at a different school district leaves her uniquely prepared to contribute to our situation quickly. So my nomination would be to move ahead with Sheena Buffy.
Thank you. Trustee Ozuna, is there a second?
I would second that.
Thank you, Trustee Klaufenstein. And with nominations, there's no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And it's unanimous. Congratulations, Ms. Buffy. I, I want to just reflect on this for just a second. This really brought me back to when I went through this process, you all did, and the, the feeling I had that night after I left was how proud I was of our community that we had the group of people that stood up there when I went through the process, that they got up there and all of them genuinely cared about our kids and the mission of the school district. And I, that certainly was apparent from you all this evening. And for all of the, you know, discussions we have about public debates, you know, having just gone through the presidential election, what happened here tonight was the diametric opposite of, of what a lot of the concerns are. And so I, I truly thank you all and, and I echo my colleagues' comments that I think we'd all be honored and happy to have served with any of you. So with that, we will, and with congratulations to Ms. Buffy, we will move to the adjournment. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Real quick.
Trustee Johnson.
Before I make the motion, can I just say that that process that everyone just went through, I think, was a little bit harder than even running a campaign. So I appreciated now all of what you three have been through as well as all 10 of these applicants. So thank you all. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Trustee Johnson. Is there a, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Trustee Klaufenstein for the second. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
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 And it is unanimous and we are adjourned. Again, thank you all.